Thank you, Alex, for starting the meeting. This is the planning board meeting for Tuesday, June 17th at 7:00 PM in the Charles River Room. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner with the, again, via the decision by the governor, I think, and the attorney general as well, that we can have a hybrid meeting. And that's how it will be held. If there's any comments from the people in Zoom, please be careful to what's in your background, because that will be visible. So with that, we'll start the meeting. I'll start with a roll call right now. And?
Eric.
Present.
Okay, Justin's out right now. Adam?
Present.
And Artie's present, Cher's present.
Oh.
And Natasha, Natasha, you here?
I'm here.
Natasha's here, so now we have four members. So Natasha's here. So the first item on the agenda was going to be the decision for the Wingate, but that is, that is going to have to be postponed because in these four members, and Eric was not here on the board at that time. So he was not at that meeting. So we're gonna have to wait till another time. David Feldman, if you're there, please know we apologize for this, but it was unintended, certainly, and not possible to do any other way at this point. So we'll have to put that off. So please be in touch with Lee, and we'll find another time to get you in and take care of that. So again, my apologies for that. The first actually scheduled meeting is for 7:15, so basically at this point, we need to fill it up, fill it up with a few things until then. We could take the minutes. Anyone want to go on to the minutes? Let's do that. Lee, are you okay with that?
Do the planning goals first?
No, no, we don't have enough time. Adam, 10 minutes, we need a bigger discussion than that one.
So I move a passage of the May 5 minutes as in our packet.
There's a motion. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Any comments on the May 5 minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, so the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May 5th part passed. Then we have a 12, May 12th minutes, motion for those?
I move that we pass the minutes of May 12 as per our packets.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to May 20th minutes.
I move passage of the May 20 minutes as in our packet.
Okay, just a little bit more in depth. Does anyone have any comments on the May 20th minutes?
Second, no.
No, okay. So I had a second, all in, any comments at all? No, all in favor of passing the May 20th minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that, is that it for the minutes?
Just to make a distinction, the comments are for the motion, not the minutes. If you have comments or questions, that would be before the motion. Actual minutes.
Okay, so we have no other minutes. That's it, so all the minutes are taken here.
So which one did you say was, which?
The Wingate decision will have to be postponed because we need four members here that were at the hearing.
Okay.
And Eric was not here at that.
Got it, it was the item number one.
Yeah, so we'll have to postpone that decision.
Okay.
Until some other date, and Lee will be in touch with David Feldman for that.
Okay.
Now we have, we can't, we can't deal with Beth Israel.
We see.
Can we deal with Beth Israel? Are they here by any chance?
Why don't we see who's present online?
Yeah, yes. Lee, can we see who's present online for Beth Israel?
Is that gonna take five minutes?
They are not here.
They are not here, okay, understandable. Okay, and we're not gonna do Charles River now. I don't, and planning board goals, I think that'll take too long.
What about correspondence?
Of course, we can deal with some correspondence here. So I'll deal with some correspondence. This is from the general public, these correspondence. From a Barbara McDonald, she's talking about when we had the large house review committee and the breakout tables. She's saying that perhaps what we should do is merge some of the information or even merge the committees between the tree and stormwater and merge with the large house review committee since there's a large carryover between the two. Then we have a comment from Emily Pickett, which is speaking, is talking about the bullfence thing, and she's, without reading the whole thing, she's unhappy with some of the things as far as being proposed with that. So that was some Barbara, I'm sorry, Emily Pickett. Then it was a, I have one more. One more here. A comment from a Robin Zucker, and she sees comments on the Muzzy conversation as well, saying that there are already two health hotels less than a mile away, and she's questioning whether a third is needed. Then she urged us to develop and design structures in proportion to the space considering the landscape around it. So those are the public comments in general. There are some comments related to the children's hospital, but I'm not, I mean, I can skip them now, but I would wait, I would wait for the hearing for that one, wait for the hearing for that one. We can have the report. Want to do a report now?
Sure.
There's nothing else we can do.
So just some good news, we closed out following town meeting. The MBTA, all the information went to the state that we, on the adoption for the MBTA Communities Act, so state in compliance. And also, all the certifications on the floodplain zoning went to FEMA. And so we're gonna be compliant as relates to that project. So that's, those are two nice closeouts that we did. Actually, I think some of you might participated in the large house review community meeting, which was held last week, and we got really good attendance at that meeting. And we also put out a survey, and we received close to 1,200 results on the survey.
I completed it.
You completed it? Okay, so you're one of, you're one of the folks that completed it. So at the next meeting, the committee's gonna be kind of looking at the input that we got at that community meeting, the input that we got from the survey, and making some decisions on the variables that we want to look at to control, like FAR, lot coverage, height, perhaps setbacks, discussing whether or not there should be a special permit process associated with this, or should it just be controlled through an asset of right process? And we're in the process of engaging an architect to do some 3D modeling, essentially taking examples of a couple of houses, modeling them under their existing framework, and reducing them, you know, as a percentage of total square footage, like 10%, 15%, 22% to see how those work out. So you have basis of comparison to see how those model results change as a function of changing effectively the FAR.
Is it taking, is it starting with a model of an existing new construction?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, I'm modeling that, basically, changing it. And so we're in the process of engaging a consultant to do that. So that's where that piece of work is.
What about Stephen Palmer? What's going on with Stephen?
Stephen Palmer, the RFP is out. It's expected, I think, I think it's expected, I think that close was this week. So then we'll be reviewing the responses that we got to select a consultant. Then that committee's work will begin.
Okay.
And I think, but between our two meetings, I think we also had the large tree committee public hearing as well.
Okay, I didn't attend that.
Yeah, no, so I think that was in between. I mean, that was, that was a decently attended meeting. We did it, we had the breakout tables similar to a large house review committee, and people had a lot to say about what's happening with trees. There was some concern about, you know, people feeling their rights about how, their rights to have trees and not have to, you know, change their right as far as the town, what they can do and not do with the trees. But a lot of people have understanding of what the trees, as far as the mitigation of the flooding goes, and certainly the health of the air and the general, the heat desert effect. So a lot, there were some varying certainly degrees of feelings of what was going on, but there were some good conversations at the tables. Then like we did at the large house review, afterwards, we, each table gave a summary of what was being discussed at that table. But I believe we are, I believe, I first saw somebody ask, we're going to have those, all those summaries typed up, I believe.
For the large house, we have, we have the summaries typed up of what, of what the comments were that we got at that public meeting. In terms of the survey, we actually, interestingly, one of the guys from the large house working group put the survey results that we got into ChatGPT, and it was amazing. It was absolutely amazing, the summary results you get out of that.
So what was the summary?
It, I don't have it with me today. We just did it this afternoon, but I'll share it with you. It's gonna be part of the, we're gonna actually ask it some others' questions. We were just kind of testing it to see how effective it was, because the survey results were like almost 80 pages long.
Wow.
Kind of take that data, take a while to kind of sort through it.
Have we asked ChatGPT what it would do?
Yeah.
Can we ask it to, can we ask the zoning article? Can we ask it to write the zoning article?
We asked it to summarize the comments that we got on the comment section. You know, it came back with a, you know, with a how many, how many responses you got, how many of the, if the community is generally concerned with this particular issue. And then it broke it down into the kind of the components of their concerns, and what the overriding responses were in different categories. It was just amazing. It is amazing piece of software. I think we're all gonna be out of jobs quickly.
Well, yes, but it's also still interesting. Sometimes you hear your comments about, when you read what ChatGPT or some other software is doing, all of a sudden you read it going, it's totally illogical, and where's it pulling that information from? So I think you're safe, I think you're safe, Lee.
Oh, we'll see. I mean, it was just something we tested out. So it's, we're gonna work with that, and look at it, look at it, of course, ourselves, but work with that, and the committee will be looking at those results on Monday when they next meet.
It could, you know, it could be useful, for instance, in drafting decisions. You know, like I've had, I've used it to draft a contract, and it was spot on.
Really? I'll have to try that, you know, it's just, it was just, you know, it was amazing that it could take that information and just summarize it that way. I mean, like in seconds, it was just.
Interesting. Well, it's now.
I guess we're all gonna be functioning at a higher level. I don't know what we'll be doing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have any other comments. Again, the tree, the tree, the tree is, that's going, that's going along. We have another meeting coming up in another, about a week, I believe, another meeting there. And again, good, good comments, good responses, and we'll just keep moving forward. And I'll look forward to the, seeing the responses as well at our next meeting. But it's now quarter past seven, so why don't we take up the public hearing?
I wanna see if we have anyone here first.
What's that?
I wanna see if we have anyone here first.
Yeah, we'll definitely check on that one. So on the public hearing for the children's hospital, it was going to be Attorney Tim Sullivan. He's supposed to be online, and a possibly Gerald Topping, Director of Major Capital Construction Projects. They both online, Alex.
Are we able to get rid of the tab at the top? Can we hit OK on that?
That's Alex, she's running it.
Yeah, if she can just click OK.
Alex, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't hear Adam very well.
We'll get to the microphones better.
Are you able to hit the OK button on your screen? Because the tab is over everyone's face, and we can't see anyone joining us.
Do you see that on your end, Alex, on the upper right of the screen?
Where it says this meeting is being recorded.
Lee, you can just do that on the computer right there in person.
There you go.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Alex, is Tim Sullivan and Gerald Topping on line, by any chance?
Tim's here.
Tim Sullivan is here. Jerry is not able to join, but I'm here tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we will open the hearing for the children's, for the children's hospital. And so, Lee, why don't we start with, why don't we start with you giving a brief summary? Because you and I talked about.
I think we have to start with the motions.
Motion to waive the reading of the, so yeah, motion to waive the reading of it? Who wants to make the motion?
Specifically, it's to waive, I move to waive the reading of the notice of hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you, Adam. So Lee, would you like, so would you like to give us, give us a summary of what's coming, coming on with the children's hospital change?
Well, I'll let Tim Sullivan speak to it. But essentially, what happened was there was a decision that was issued on children's hospital, which included some traffic mitigation conditions, specifically as it relates traffic improvements anticipated at the intersection of Kendrick and Third Avenue, which required, I think, a donation to the town of, I think it was $30,000, and $25,000. Let me just open this up. I already, I wasn't expecting to speak on this.
Sorry about that, Lee. Well, you want to just go over to Tim? Just go over to Tim.
I'm happy to give a summary, Lee, if it's helpful.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, I think you were, basically, I think allowing, you were asking for an amendment to Section 111 and Condition 3, Point 3, to allow the town to utilize all the traffic operations improvements at the intersection other than, at a location, I think, other than Third and Kendrick as it was currently written in the decision. I think you were also looking, I guess, for a modification in terms of when the reviews of the operations of the facility in terms of traffic was gonna be done. I think it was originally tied to one year after the certificate of occupancy. I think you were asking now for it to be at three years. And I think that you were asking that in terms of your mitigation, that in terms of signal warrant analysis that you were gonna perform at Kendrick and Fourth Avenue be done, be recognized, I think, through a $25,000 allocation to the town.
Thank you, Lee. Tim, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you take it from there, Tim?
Sure. Tim Sullivan, Gulston and Stores, for the record, here on behalf of Boston Children's Hospital. So just a little bit of background, I think many members of the board and those watching remember in 2021, children's bought property next to the TripAdvisor building. And there was a rezoning by town meeting to allow a pediatric medical facility there. The site had previously been approved for office, so we amended the special permit after the rezoning to allow for the construction of a 240,000 square foot pediatric medical facility at 361st Avenue. So good news following that, we pulled the building permit, and construction's well underway, and actually in process of getting the CFO for the portion of the construction for the garage. And in the fall, I think they'll be looking to get a CO for the building. So a lot of the hard work that was put in is being realized in the projects moving forward. So all good news there. So these amendments are really just to align some of the facts to the decision that we drafted, and they're, as Lee said, so we're asking for an amendment of Condition 3.3. We were obligated to pay $30,000 to the town to use for construction of improvements at Third Avenue and Kendrick Street. I understand this all started because Chris Heath reached out and said, "The Commonwealth isn't permitting those improvements, and we'd like to use the money elsewhere." And that's what we're requesting amendment, just to line up to that. So this, it amends the decision so that that $30,000 that we've already paid can be used elsewhere. The second amendment is to Condition 3.4. So when the decision was issued, it said that traffic monitoring would commence a year after certificate of occupancy. So when this project is, when we have a CO, there'll be about six months of stuff that has to happen in the building before patients can be seen. And then there'll be a ramp up period. So really, that one year isn't the right timeframe. So what we're asking for is that that monitoring commences three years after occupancy, so that the first monitoring conducted is reflective of an operational facility. It allows for the, the pre-opening things to happen and for the ramp up period to happen. And then the final amendment is, as Lee said, to Condition 3.5. Our obligation there was to work with the town and Mastod to, to conduct a traffic signal warrant analysis and roadway safety audit. We just want to clarify that work with means we'll pay for it, and that we had estimated that to $25,000. So our obligation would be to fund that money to satisfy the obligation. That's just, it was sort of an ambiguous condition, and we just want to clarify it that it's a funding obligation, and we'll fund it. So those are the three amendments we're here for, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Natasha, I'm gonna start with you, Natasha.
I don't have any questions. I read that none of the, maybe none of the town entities had any questions, so.
No, they were all just waiting.
So I'm fine, thanks.
Yeah, I'll read into the, I'll read into it after our questions, the entities. Eric, do you have any comments?
Yeah, we just walked through the three-year ramp up period. You said there was gonna be six months where there's really not anything operational. So it's two and a half years to get sort of, I guess, full steam in terms of what the traffic is gonna be?
So it may not take that full two and a half years, but we really won't be open and operating for six months. And then following that six-month period, then there's a period of time to start seeing patients, get everybody in there. So three years, we're comfortable with at that point. It will, three years from the CFO, so about two years after opening that we will be fully operational and that the traffic will be reflective at that point.
Adam?
No, I have no, no real substantive comments. I, I think this, you're, this is a minor modification, right?
This is an amendment.
It's an amendment. It says that in the agenda, but I think, Tim, your note reflects a minor modification.
I mean, we've gone, we've gone through the process for an amendment. I think that what I was, these are really minor substantively. I mean, we're, we're really just kind of cleaning up some facts, I guess, is what I was trying to convey.
So Lee, were you intending that, that the applicant in Condition 3.5, would it self-conduct the safety signal warrant analysis and the road safety audit? Or are you satisfied with the town conducting that with a $25,000 contribution from the applicant?
I'm satisfied with the town conducting it, and engineering and DPW have been consulted, and they're satisfied with that arrangement.
And is that amount?
They have indicated that that amount is sufficient for their purposes and what they anticipated under the permit.
Should it be up to 25?
I think the agreement was 25,000, and the town engineer has signed off on that.
Okay. I have no further comment or questions. I'm satisfied.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Yeah, I am as well. It's extremely straightforward. What I'd like to do is just read into the, read into the minutes. That the place, again, police had no comment on this particular one, as did Joe Pride in that department, no comments as well. Public health, which is fine, and Tom, the fire chief, Tom Carnary, is fine as well. No comments from them. So I, does anyone else have any comments?
No.
We all said? Okay, so then we can drive a motion to close the hearing.
No, you wanna check the public hearing, you wanna check your public comments?
Thank you. Anyone in the audience have any comments? Thank you, Adam.
Can we see who's online like we used to? Alex, can you see or can you show who's online as participants and?
Is anyone, Alex?
Um, they're. Pardon?
Is anyone online with a hand raised who would like to make a comment?
No.
And as, as Adam was saying, can, are we able to see the participants?
Yeah, so you would just press the participants button at the bottom, and then.
No, I can't see it from here. Sorry, I can't see that far.
I know it's challenging, it's far away.
Two more.
There we go.
There.
Okay.
And put out that the.
Okay. Okay, so there are no comments, and then there's no comments. I would like a motion now to close the hearing.
So move.
Okay, any additional comments?
So I can have a decision prepared that basically grants us relief for your signature and vote at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and all opposed? None. Thank you very much, Lee, I appreciate that, so.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
And we'll have it next time. Thank you, Tim, appreciate that. Our next hearing isn't until quarter of eight, so again, we have some, we have some, we have some leeway here.
We've got 20 minutes, I don't care, conversation with the goals.
Unless they're here, right?
We can't start, we can't start it before quarter.
Charles member is not here.
We can't start this one till quarter of eight.
How the goals?
Is the hospital here? Is that everyone? Okay. So why don't we move to the goals? At least we can start it.
Yeah.
Okay. That works. Okay, so let's talk about some of, some of the goals we have in line.
So the first part of the, of the spreadsheet, has that been updated? Have you updated that, Lee or Alex?
We basically tried to put together a framework, just to kind of show you what was on the table. It was, I think, in your packet, what the existing ongoing projects were. And then basically, I think, what was identified in terms of your other goals that we hadn't really assigned, well, we, I think we need to update and figure out what the priorities are in terms of, and when those items should happen.
Sure.
In the context of what's already existing and ongoing.
Before we get to the, to the goals, desired projects, just dealing with the existing ongoing projects, as for instance, the large house review committee.
Right.
The community meeting in June, has that been, has that been?
Yes, I mean, that's basically.
That's all mapped out and updated?
We've had, we've.
We just, yes, we had the community meeting in June, right? We anticipate having, yes, so this is basically, I think, reflective of, under the ongoing and the existing projects.
Right.
This is reflective of what our commitments are that we know of.
So when would you?
And the timelines associated with those commitments in a broad, in a broad perspective.
So you think it'll take until October of 2026 to be able to finalize a parking bylaw change?
I think the report's not, it's gonna get, I think the, I think the report work is gonna get started in the fall. I think the, I think the report itself is gonna get generated in the spring, which means if the zoning changes, we go in the fall. Because the report would have to be done in November or December with recommendations to actually craft zoning to happen in the spring.
I get that, I just think four months between workshops is a long period of time. I don't, yeah, we could.
Well, we, maybe we can shorten those workshops up, but I think it's still, I think it still means.
Which workshops are you referring to?
I think it's still.
The one in the parking bylaw.
Yeah.
I won't talk about that.
Well, I thought you were, I wasn't sure if you were lumping other.
Well, we're talking about the parking bylaw, and we're looking specifically at the workshops. So it seems like there's an opportunity to truncate that a bit.
Truncate it a bit, but I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's. Yeah, but I don't think it's gonna make a May town meeting.
Yeah, I understand. So, I mean, I see, I certainly see a fairly easy opportunity for us to be able to, between now and May of this, May of 2026, to be able to bring to town meeting at that time a zoning bylaw change for, to unlock the Charles and, and the great, great plain between Pickering and Warren. And I think, yeah, it's really Pickering to, or Warren to Linden, I think, more specifically. And I say that because that's gonna have the biggest impact to the town and the greatest benefit. So I see that as the highest level of urgency, and would recommend, you know, those while we continue to work on the other pieces on perhaps a slower path.
Well, we have one thing that's not in the mix right now. One thing that's not in the mix is actually the 100 West Street coming back.
But they're not coming back for zoning.
100 West Street is still coming back in the, they'll have hearings.
We'll have lots of applications.
But this doesn't have projects on it.
Yeah, Artie, this is just our planning goals. It's not about projects.
It's in addition, in addition to the projects.
Okay.
It's more kind of the goals of, the, I think also, if you sent in the MBTA communities and we're starting to see housing projects, I think having the design guidelines for the MBTA zoning is pretty important.
I agree, you know.
I, I agree with.
Totally.
But I think, I think.
We can have, we can have that going concurrently. You could do that for us.
Well, I didn't say that we shouldn't do the ones you mentioned. I'm just saying, I, I was saying the ones that I think are also.
Agreed.
Important is the multifamily, sorry, the design guidelines are pretty important. And so, one question is Stephen Palmer. It says committee work initiates, but it doesn't say when it ends.
No, we, we haven't fleshed all that out, because we're waiting for the proposals. I guess we could have put an end date in it, which is gonna be the spring for that report. But we didn't, I didn't lay out the timeline, because we're in the process of, you know, the RFPs are coming in, we're gonna have proposals in. So we have the specifics of how that's gonna lay out, I don't have yet.
Okay. And then, is that okay? I have just an additional question.
Okay.
Just one more question is. Just one more question is, um, I know that we weren't able to get more help with the budget, you know, like you didn't, we didn't get the additional person to help with, and Alex, what can you, beyond the projects that are coming in, which seem to be picking up from the past year, let's say, w- w- how many can you actually do in parallel? The capacity that you have?
I think right now with, between the large house and Stephen Palmer, and we're staffing both of those, that that's gonna eat up a lot of bandwidth.
Okay.
So...
I mean, just, 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 just those, because we're staffing both committees. So, um, and we're, you know, managing consultants around both, around both projects. So...
I can, I, I hear that. And yet, why don't we, why don't we plug some things in here? We could get a couple of us together. Uh, I can work with Justin on, on unlocking the Charles. Uh, Eric, if you want to work together on Great Plain, I'd be happy to do that with you.
Well, with the Great, not with the Great Plain, if we're looking at the center of town, I think we have to look at the center of town.
So...
Not, not just Linden to Warren Street. We have to look at the center of town. I think it, e- either, I think either we're just doing a small, small little carryover to the 888 or we'll, or we're actually looking at this whole center of town.
We can't do 888 because that would be spot zoning. So what we can do is look at Great Plain on the north side and the south side of the street in a defined run of the town. And that will encompass, and that, you know, we're not then dealing with Highland Avenue, we can do that after. And we're not necessarily dealing with Chapel, we can do that after. But that's, that's a critical part of the spine. And I think if we do that, that becomes a model because we will have to deal with some of the proximity to town, uh, to the, uh, town, you know, uh, town hall. And, uh, we'll be able to then resolve all of the, uh, issues that are gonna surface as a result of the process. Which will help the other ones.
I can, I can appreciate that, but I think we have to look at, I mean, we have to look at the whole center of town. We have to look at down, down Chapel, down Highland Avenue, maybe up, up Chestnut a little bit. We have to, we have to look at, we have to look at that whole center, the whole radius.
Okay, look, you're...
Not, not just between, I mean, no, no, I mean, we're a committee, we get to decide, you know, as a group type thing, what we like to do. But I'd like to look at the whole center of town because it's gonna take, you know, do we add, do we add, have a parking garage behind, um, you know, Cooks or something like that? What do we do with, you know, a parking garage, a structure, housing on top of it? What do we do globally as a center of town?
I, I, I totally agree. I think that makes a ton of sense. Your chair, it's your prerogative, you know, if the board, you know, doesn't want to take...
Sorry, I, I just, big picture is, can we do projects without having the planning director involved?
I'm not saying do projects. All I'm saying is, I can work with Justin, I can work with Eric to come up with, to come up with some basic planning to, a- and also some guidelines or some draft bylaws, take some of that pressure off, um, our staff committee. And then I can, then I can present it, Eric can present it and Justin can present it internally and, uh, have discussion among the board. And then we can have, when we have something that we're, you know, fairly, uh, pleased with, then we would open it up to the, you know, to the public for public comment into that process. So all I'm trying to do is map out here some specific dates and timelines and activities to get it onto the planning calendar. If we don't want to do it, no problem. But I just think that we're, you know, FinCon made some pretty important messages. And I think that we have an opportunity to be able to, um, you know, to be able to kickstart some of these, you know, activities which are quintessential to the economic growth of our town, to reduce the tax, you know, the residential tax burden.
Well, I'm, well, I mean, I mean, and I can appreciate definitely, the one main thing that come up is the 888 Great Plain. I mean, that's, that's the thing, this whole thing, that's the thing that's, that could trigger first out of making some change here. And I can appreciate that. I would really like, I, I want the whole center of town as part of a conversation. And we don't need 15 people to do it. It can be a smaller group, you know, eight or nine, but it has to be, it has to be a form, some, a version of a formal group looking at the whole radius of the center of town. Is, is, this is something that's gonna take some time, but we have to do it. We have to do it for the community. Again, the economic aspect, and that's what we're talking about. What are we, what are we changing here for the whole, the whole, the whole center? I mean, there is the Envision thing coming up, that's been, you know, that's essentially been turned back now. And, but we have to look at the whole center, what we're doing. What, what's hap- what's happening on, what's happening on Chapel Street? What's happening with some type of parking garage?
You want to look at it holistic.
I want to look at it holistically. I don't want, I don't want to do one, one strip right now.
So I guess my question is, Adam, is trying to be proactive on some of these things, but normally, these things are done by committee, not just one or two people.
So I'm not saying we don't get there.
But if...
All I'm saying is that, is that a couple of us, we've limited capacity. So we can choose to, to really slow walk this stuff and it'll take a couple of years, and it'll be 2027, until we come to town meeting with some substantive economic development opportunities. We can do that, or we can try to accelerate it a little bit by a couple of us getting together. If you want to deal with it, you know, it would be great if you want to take the design considerations for MBTA zoning, take a stab at it, present it to the board, we can talk about it, we'll talk about, like Arty has, has Lee's legitimate comments, you know, and concerns that should be incorporated into the process. We have an opportunity in the calendar to deal with those issues.
An opportunity to deal with, an opportunity to deal with which issues?
With the ones that, so this, the issue is that Lee has a certain amount of capacity. And there has been a lot of state mandates that she's been working on and they take time because we have a process, a community process and all of that. And, and, I mean, I just think that we have to prioritize them. And I, I understand what you're saying, you're trying to move it forward, but I don't think one or two people without a planner is, and without, sometimes we have committees with other groups from the town, is helpful to move something forward because it needs different layers. It's just not, I, I don't know, that's just my take on it.
I think we can get there, but, you know, as sort of the, the newer member of the planning board, I'd like to wrestle back some of the planning functions of the planning board as a member and, and spearhead some of those. Um, and we can start small and, you know, in, in, involve Lee and, and other members of the department. Um, but I, I, I agree with Adam's point that we should sort of be more proactive on that. In terms of what the scope is, Arty, we can, we can all have a conversation. But I, you know, one of the reasons I wanted to run was to, to, to not just necessarily hear the great projects and, and hear the reviews, but also to do some planning. And, and, and I, and I think it starts from the top in some respects. So I, I would be supportive that we get a jumpstart on that and we can certainly grow from there. Um, but let's get the train moving.
Well, one, one problem is we talk about having three members from the planning board form a group that is looking at planning for the center of town. Is there, is there, is there a public meeting aspect that, is three members of the planning board? No, no, not...
No, I think, I think he said two.
No.
Would you, would you want to create a working group? I mean, if you're interested in, like, for example, looking at that particular block, um, would, would, would you two want to maybe just create a working group and think about other representatives from town, town government that should participate in that, whether it's from the SLF Board, the Economic Development Commission, the Finance Committee?
So why don't we do this?
Create a process.
I, I'm basically create a process. I mean, because there's a planning process kind of around, you know, large house, there's a planning process that's kind of happening around Stephen Palmer.
And we're not looking to, we're not looking to not have a public process or not to have a proper planning process. I just, I, I just think that we have an opportunity here and if we miss the market, we're gonna miss the market by years. I mean, look at what we did with Muzzy when it took us 10 months to make a decision, during which time, you know, the lab market cratered and the interest rates more than doubled, killed the project. So, you know, I, I really just think that the opportunity here is, for instance, Justin and I could get together, that's two, not three, Arty. And then, and then, and then, um, we, you know, he and I can come up with a framework, we'll bring it back to the board. And Eric and I can do the same with Great Plain. And you can do the same with, uh, with the design for MBTA guidelines.
Well, I think the design guidelines are basically looking at those different districts and they're actually developing guidelines for those and...
Yeah, Natasha can lead that.
Yeah, but I'm doing Stephen Palmer, so I...
Okay, so no, we don't do that. Okay, that's fine. I'm just, I know that's an area, design and area interest...
I know what you're trying to do, I don't disagree that we should try to do more. I think in some ways, are there grants that we can get to have someone help us run this week? I know, or...
I, we, we just got the parking grant.
Right.
After how many times it tries?
Just to have someone lead it, because, I mean, we, we'd have to do public, like, we would be putting together the public meeting, I mean...
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to, you know, to have a meeting with someone from FinCon as well and see if we can get some additional support.
But I do think that you need representation from the planning board since it's planning, just even if they just show up at the meeting or whatever. But I, I think you just, I think you should lay out a process that you think could, could move us forward.
That's what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
But I don't think it's gonna end up being very much different than what it is now. Because even with the process that we have now, we have so much pushback that everything takes eight times as long as we want it to.
I mean, I'm baffled.
That's a reality. I, I'm, I'm all for, I run a private business, I do things really fast, but I also work for public entities and, and it just, the process or community process just takes longer. So if we can streamline it and make it so the community can be really involved and we can move things faster, I, I'm all for it. We just need to understand process.
Well, right now, we don't have any leadership about trying to put a map onto these things. That's what I'm trying to do. So, so if you don't want us to do it, we won't. But we have an opportunity here, you've got Eric that's prepared to volunteer and step up. I'm offering to do that and Justin's offering to do that.
Right.
I'm not saying truncate the process, I'm not at all saying exclude the public. That's not what I'm saying.
No, I didn't think you said that, I'm just saying, I think they put a pretty tight schedule on, um, for most, for most projects. I mean, for the MBTA, it was super tight. We had, we had a, a meet, you know, we had a deadline of a year and, and we could barely even make it based on, um, what the, what the community wanted us to do.
But that's also a very...
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor, actually, I'm in favor of trying to find some way to...
I'm in favor also.
I'm trying, I'm trying to find some way to get, you know, again, flag it again, the 888 Great Plain Act, because that's what, you know, that's what's, I understand, it's flagged around, a lot of it's flagged around that. And I'm all for that, I'm all for changing something within the Linden Street to Warren Street. I'm all, I'm all for that as well, I really am. Finding, finding some, making some changes, that will work.
I just don't think it has to be that complicated.
Well, make a, create a work, I'm all for it if we can do it. Create a work plan and then, you're gonna need consultants to do drawings, you're gonna need, there's like pieces to it.
All I'm trying to do is initiate the process. And we're talking about, talking about doing it at some point, I'm baffled.
Well, yeah, I, I think it would be really helpful if you want to do those two things, if you could just kind of think about the steps and the process and then lay it out with a calendar and then come back and then we'll all talk about it.
That's all I want to do. All I want to do.
Yeah, just kind of lay out, you know, what you're, what you're anticipating doing there, what, what the steps would be, what the products would be, when they would happen.
I think it's just getting the train going.
Exactly.
A lot of these projects have been discussed, I've heard about these, this before I joined the board and...
Well, which projects you referring to?
The, unlocking the Charles, the Great Plain.
Yeah.
Um, you know, espe- especially when, when we've heard about Envision and the businesses in the center of town worried about their future and what can we do from a planning perspective to, um, support our local businesses? And, you know, I, I think it's very important and they need the help now. And I, you know, I, I want to get something in place so that we can start that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine trying to find some way to streamline the time, this timeline. I'm all, I'm all for that.
So we're resolved that Eric and I will work on the set on the, uh, 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 Great Plain and Justin and I will work on unlocking the Charles and we'll come back with the process and the framework. Okay? Anyone else want to take up any of the other items?
I think, I think Arty's on large house already and Natasha's on Stephen Palmer.
I'm on the tree already.
All right.
That's gonna be a lot.
That's a lot.
All right. Good work.
Okay, it's now quarter of, um, little house quarter of eight. Now I want to, uh, now I want to the Cogswell Building, I believe. This is a continued, this is a continued hearing, I believe. Yes, a continued hearing in Cogswell. And so we have, what, Tyler Cufelis, he's here, and we have a Ken Sargent, Senior Product Manager, Hank Haff, I see Hank. Uh, Karis, I see Karis here and Chris, I don't know if it is Chris Heap here, is Chris Heap in the, uh...
Coming down, he's in, he's in a meeting.
Oh, he's in a meeting, so he'll be coming down, okay. So again, this is a continued hearing of 1407 Central Ave, pretty expand the addition of the, the Cogswell Building and also talk about the traffic mitigation, the entrance exits, and also talk about, um, how are the, how are the vehicles gonna get there? What time they're gonna get there? So why don't you, uh, why, why, who wants to start?
Uh, I can start. I'm just spinning out here.
You need to go upstairs.
I texted him.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just before we pick off, all right, don't mind. Uh, it might be a good idea to take your microphone and turn it around and bring it really close to the, or...
We can share this one.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll say.
I think, I think Hank solved it there, thanks a lot.
So, last time we spoke, there was a lot of conversation on the traffic study and there was a, several questions asked. So we went back and, uh, filled in additional information to help clarify some of these questions. Uh, so this is the first diagram I wanted to explain. Uh, this explains the entrance and exit. So the green arrows show where all the traffic will be entering the site, um, at the existing Cogswell storage facility. And when the vehicles leave that, they'll have to follow the orange pass out screen left. For the majority of the days, they'll be, the, the far left one will be the exit. But when the RTS is closed, they'll have to take the middle exit. One of the questions or comments that occurred during the last meeting was regards a 2014 traffic study regarding, um, the center aisle, which is the one that is measuring the 305 distances from. That, uh, intersection didn't have enough distance to meet the intersection stopping distance. Uh, however, it does adequately meet the stopping site distance. Um, and one of the clarifications on that is that in order for a, uh, intersection to operate safely, you have to have at least, uh, the stopping site distance to be met. And, um, even though it doesn't meet the intersection stopping distance, it can still operate safely. Yeah, so this is just another slide, just highlighting the numbers. So the stopping site distance is based on a speed limit of 40, even though the speed limit's 30. I think that was based on observations where the observed speed was a little higher and what the speed limit is.
It changes to 40 around the corner, that's probably why.
Yeah. Um, and then in regards to how vehicles will be distributed between or through the site to get to the fleet maintenance garage, uh, we created this diagram. A good chunk of the vehicles that will be coming from screen right on, at 470. And currently, there are two paths that are typically taken. The lighter green one, um, is more, lighter vehicles tend to like to take that route. Um, whereas heavier vehicles currently take this darker route where it may be a little longer distance, but it's less congested and has less lights and it's easier for larger vehicles to go. So currently, that darker green path is what, uh, is regularly being used now. There was some concern about traffic being, taking the Mark Tree Road shown in red. Um, but the DPW has agreed to implement a standard operating procedure to avoid using that road.
So the dark green is South Street to Charles River to Central.
Correct. Um, so currently, as of today, vehicles at the RTS, uh, that need to go get maintained at 470 will take, uh, this, likely take this route. I'm talking with the folks that, uh, with the fleet maintenance supervisors, that's, that's the path that they like to take now and would continue to use later.
The path they're taking now is South Street, that's one of the paths they're taking now.
Yeah, the heavier vehicles prefer this longer route, yeah.
Tyler, if you don't mind I add, but, um, so right now, DPW vehicles on a regular basis go to this facility because every single division within DPW uses the RTS for the same services that people use the RTS for. So our grounds crew, our, um, highway crew, water and sewer crew, they're already utilizing, um, that facility. And so there's sort of two options for how vehicles would get there. You have vehicle that's there... And so there's sort of two options for how vehicles would get there. You have vehicle that's there for like prescribed maintenance or prescriptive maintenance in which that piece would have to be driven sort of directly, likely come in, they drive directly from this facility all the way to the fleet or drop it off on their way sort of at the end of the day. But it is also quite likely that through the day, when they have interruption in service, they'll be driving from wherever they are in town, because we do work throughout the entire town, to this facility as well. So that's just, wanted to give you some context for what our operation would look like.
Multifold increase in traffic that's going to that building now with the, with the increased bays?
So I don't think that that's what our traffic study indicated.
As far as the vehicles from, from the DP, the current location to this location, there won't be a change in volume?
So right now, the RTS vehicles have to make the opposite transition, so they're adding to the volume in the opposite direction. They are the largest customer of the fleet. Just those, that particular type of equipment, it gets the most intense wear of any of our pieces. And so you'll have a reduction on that end and then an increase from our staff. So I, certainly Tyler can speak to the specifics of the traffic study, but the traffic study did not show a significant increase.
I saw that.
And in comparison, the number of trips, the majority of the trips are passenger cars and other vehicles, not town-owned vehicles, going to the RTS. And the increase was like two percent?
No, point two percent.
Point two percent, zero point two percent increase.
Yeah, so in our, our estimate, we came up with thirty-two trips generated a day from the facility and this number is, in our opinion, slightly conservative. Some of the, the way we generated it was we got a number of seven hundred and seventy-four vehicle repairs made last year between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And we increased that number by ten percent to account for some repairs that might not have been documented. That came out to around three point three vehicle repair visits per day. And some of those seven hundred and seventy-four vehicles are actually inspections that are actually not performed at this site, they're done elsewhere. So that, that number is conservative that way. It was estimated around twenty to twenty-five percent of those vehicle trips come from the RTS. So those quarter percent don't have to go through town anymore, they just have to go next door. But we kept those in there to be conservative. Let's see.
So basically, it's really negligible, it's really minimal?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You have less bigger trucks coming up.
There's, we're just short of fourteen thousand vehicles there on that road a day and adding thirty-two trips is a point zero zero two increase or two, point two percent.
I think some, some of the main concerns were, you know, the exiting of it.
Right.
And also in the pathway, how you get into it. Some people, and the Mark Tree Road was talked about and that's a mighty different road in some ways. But, but I didn't, I would, in some ways, I would have thought the South Street could be similar in some ways.
We drive every road in the town in Needham, it's how we do our job, so it's not, uh.
I didn't say you didn't drive every road in Needham, the pathway to this facility, I would have thought that would have been the, you know, not, not the preferred way. I understand, I understand kind of an easy pathway from the DPW to get onto the South Street. It's a long and winding historic road. Didn't, I'm just curious, was it, not that the flow of the story would be better, but I guess I'll say going through the center of town in the early morning hours when there's not much traffic, you're going down Needham, Great Plain Ave, right up Central Ave, then you're already on the right side of the road.
So the issue has, has more to do with the number of traffic lights and having to stop with the larger pieces of equipment.
Okay.
I think the information you provided that quantified, you know, the number of trips, where they're coming from, the trip distribution and the perspective of the whole of, you know, the, the additive trips, incremental increase, I think was really helpful for us. But I think that commitment to change the standard of practice, I think, is also really helpful. I'm satisfied.
The Mark Tree Road?
Yeah, yeah, Mark Tree and also the exit, the exiting strategy as usual. Anything else?
I, I had some slides in the storm order.
If you guys wanted to talk about it, because I know we, we did submit the storm order report in request to.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Yeah.
I was satisfied with that and this. And then also with the noise attenuation strategy.
Yeah, with the, the sound wall and the generator.
The light starting and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
That was it.
That's it.
No, I just, I sort of said this when I talked to individuals about the location and just. I think there's a lot of concern because it's a new functionality in a, in an area, but I just encourage people, if they wanna know, you know, activity, noise, whatever, if you come to our facility at like nine o'clock in the morning, you'll see about the same amount of activity that you'll see at this, this new location. One of the things, you know, we have this lovely path behind us that actually, there's a lot of people who park here to go walk on that path. And they come here because they think it's a serene, lovely place to be. And that's with all the noise that we generate and that shows you, I think, generally speaking, how low level that is. And that's in a building that has insufficient air conditioning, so those doors are open all summer long. This new facility will have air conditioning and those doors will be shut. So if people are concerned in the neighborhood and wanna know what it's like, you know, come here, spend an hour on the trail and you'll kind of get a feel for what it's like. And it should be less noise than that, not more, because the facilities will be much more conducive to doing work indoors.
I think there's also the concern of the unknown, I guess the phrase unknown, pickleball courts, skate park, some of that will be early morning hours. And so there's concern of what's happening with increased traffic with that. And we don't have a, we don't have that data right now. Anything else? Anything else, the board?
Do you want to open up for a comment?
I, I will, I will. Board, any comments from the board? Just some comments from the board. I'm gonna open up for public comment then. And here's someone, Holly, come on up.
Can I speak to some ground rules?
No, thank you, yes. The ground rules are to say your name and address and if you're online, make sure that you hide your background or you, you careful what's behind you. And again, say your name, when you get up, say your name and address and, welcome, welcome, Holly. What's it, well, I don't think, you know, usually we have time limits and I don't think we'll have a big time limit problem with this one. But usually we allow three minutes apiece, but go ahead. We don't, we don't have a lot of people gonna speak on this.
We should discuss that later. But anyway, first of all, I certainly appreciate, and Karis, when you mentioned that any road in Needham, there's traffic. I, I think that's the reality of it. And, but when this project was presented at town meeting, my name is Holly Clark, I live at sixteen fifty-two Central Avenue, I am a town meeting member for Precinct D. When it was presented to town meeting, one of the issues that was raised was traffic. And it was specifically raised about everything that's being put on Central Avenue. I know later you'll be talking about Charles River and that's the Charles River Center, which is a great project, but it's coming off Central Avenue. And that's a little bit of ways away. But this is right across the street from the field. It is right across the street where pickleball courts are planned. It is across from where the skate park is projected. And that was raised last time. And it was distressing to me to read a comment in the traffic study that, that the proponents weren't given any traffic impact assessments or chip generation data for those projects, including sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue. And this may come back to Eric's comment about planning. These projects are proposed by the different departments without the planning of where they're going. And so what came up last time was, this is us, we are doing it to ourselves. I am not saying this isn't a good project and I am not assuming the conclusion of it. But the truth of the matter is, there is a traffic issue here. It's not just you're going up point two percent, that doesn't sound like anything, but if you're already flooded, you're bringing more. And now it's coming, and there's more that's coming across the street. And one comment I'm sure was made last time was, we should just get this data now, we should know, because you know these other projects are coming. And I am surprised that we're talking about, let's not go on Mark Tree, a typical traffic study would have studied the nearby intersections. That would have given you, us data about Mark Tree. And I certainly appreciate for the folks on Mark Tree, listening to them and saying they're concerned and saying, okay, we can cut them out of the process or out of the, this issue. I, I appreciate that. But by saying, we'll go over to Charles River, we're just shifting it without having looked at that intersection or either intersection. And I will tell you that when they worked on the daycare center at sixteen eighty-eight, there was a traffic study done. And anyone could find it at the October fifth, twenty twenty-one Planning Board Packet. And it will tell you that the intersection to Charles River and Central Avenue is already operating at an F level. So I understand the trucks have to get there somehow. But for me, it would have been helpful to hear, well, what's going on at these intersections? Because maybe there's mitigation, it wouldn't mean you wouldn't do it, but there might be mitigations that should happen at that intersection. Like that neighborhood has been looking to get like a crosswalk there because there are kids there. So maybe it's time to do that. Maybe it was time to do it when the daycare center got proposed, but the, the traffic mitigations that were envisioned for that have gone by the wayside at the moment. But now, we're adding this, which perhaps we're saying the best way to go is to bring heavy trucks there. And you might say, well, there were heavy trucks coming and going. I think there's an issue about when and which way the direction is flowing. Right? If, if a truck was coming out of the RTS in the morning and going over Charles River, it's going against traffic. Versus if you're gonna be coming over South Street and taking a right on Central in the morning, you're gonna be in the rush hour, right? The rush hour is heading north. So I think there's just more analysis that should be done.
I thought they did have that though, actually.
If, if, I mean, one of the things, and I, I don't remember whether it's in the, actually stated in the report, but the, the hours for the facility are six thirty to three.
Mm-hmm.
So all that traffic in the morning is coming in before rush hour and it's going, and everyone will be out of there before the afternoon rush hour. So it's not adding to the, the rush hour count.
Well, I think, and I think it is possible, I think we talked last time and, and I did.
Hold on, one second. So when, when you guys are making comments, address the comments this way, please.
Okay.
And not between each other, okay?
Sure.
Please do, do it, please do it that way. So, sorry, again, you just, so Holly.
So, one of the concepts that was mentioned at the, the tour of the facility here before town meeting was the idea of maybe limiting when trucks would be brought over. So sure, if there are six or eight employees that are coming in the morning at six thirty, they're, they're beating the morning rush. If you're bringing a truck at seven fifteen, you're not beating the morning rush. I, I, I live there. It's just, it just starts really early. So, but one of the comments was made, that it might be possible to say, you know what, we're gonna bring the trucks, you know, ten to two thirty, since folks live at three. Like perhaps there is a way to condition that which wouldn't interfere with the purpose of the building, but would be a condition that could help on the streets. Like if you're going up on, on a Charles River, you know, there's the field there that whenever that field is in use, that street is packed. And bringing, you know, trucks down there, it is a legitimate concern. And so, and again, that traffic analysis for the daycare center, that was done, that was accessible. And frankly, I, I would have expected the proponents here to have done the full traffic analysis, to have looked, and, and again, it's the town, it's, it's us. And it would have been useful for this project and it would be useful for the, for the next. So if you're. Yes, there is. So if we're gonna, if you're considering granting it, I think there are conditions that you, that you should put on it. And one would be to limit the use to what the DPW has requested. Last time, the request was it was just gonna be seasonal storage and that was put in the permit. Here, it's being requested to be used as the fleet maintenance with six bays and six employees or maybe eight, maybe there's a supervisor plus one coming. And that's the limitation of it, because that's what you're analyzing. You could limit the times coming in and out. And I appreciated the idea about the driveway saying, you know, the preference is to use one. I'm not sure why, why it can't be opened on Monday. I understand that the RTS is closed, but perhaps someone, you know, working at the fleet manager can open it. And then the, uh, there was one other thing, which has just escaped me, but I will, I will send it on. I also have to add, David Lazarus is a neighbor who I thought had sent a letter to the board, so I don't know if you got it, but when Artie, when you mentioned the, the communication, I didn't, I just didn't hear it and I think it's worth, worth looking at.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I don't remember seeing it.
I think it may have come. I, I got a copy of it today, so I have, it may have just been sent recently, but.
Thank you, Holly. Okay, thank you, thank you. Yes, please do.
I think the intent was, and Karis can correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent was to get the trucks there either in the afternoon, sort of in that two o'clock window, dropping, dropping them off late in the afternoon or first thing in the morning to, to avoid that, that, that traffic. So I think that will mitigate that a little. The other thing is, on the daycare, I'm not sure, is that operating now?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Yeah, it's about, and that'll have traffic, a lot of traffic both directions.
Well, I was gonna say, if it was operating now, that would be in the traffic counts, but it, it's not, so, okay.
I just wanna add to, I think, what you said. I think you're correct. Our intention will come prescribed maintenance, preventative maintenance, things that we know that are coming up, absolutely. The reason that a town maintains its own, maintains its own fleet service and doesn't outsource it is to deal with emergencies. So I just wanna be clear that limiting the hours that we have access to the facility as far as drop off and pickup as a general rule could be problematic for our ability to actually triage and repair equipment. I'll give a really good example, which is during snow and ice operations, the facility, when it come, like, we staff, when we have assault shift come out, we have two people who are at this facility in order to repair any of the equipment that we have or to assist any of our vendors. The same thing would need to be true, that could be in the night, that could be in the morning, that could be throughout the day, and the same with other pieces of equipment. Again, we have a practice and what we'd wanna do for preventative maintenance, but that would not necessarily apply to emergency repairs.
So one, one question I have is related to Mark Tree Road for a second. So you have used Mark Tree Road before?
We currently use Mark Tree Road and you'll just have to correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we decided not to use Mark Tree Road is not because of the data that we collected in the traffic study, but based on the comments that we received about the project.
How do you get to Mark Tree Road?
So typically through High Rock.
Just, just through, just through High Rock. You know, you don't ever, okay, you don't ever come, get to it further down, just High Rock, okay?
I mean, that's when we're coming from four seventy. If we're coming from wherever we are in the town, it's however we get there, the, the easiest.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to speak to is just a question about the other facilities that are potentially being developed on the same parcel. The challenge is obviously, the town just sought design funds for those two projects. We have no idea what the scope is gonna be, we don't know how many courts are gonna be designed, we don't know what the parking demand is gonna be, they haven't even started engaging a consultant. So it can't, even if it were within the scope of our project, we don't even know what we would be taking into consideration.
Make it real quick, Holly.
I, I will, I can just, again, this isn't really a DPW issue, it, it's a planning issue, right? It's like Park and Rec said, where would it be good to put a pickleball court? We'll put it over on Central Avenue because it's not by houses. And then somebody said, what are you gonna do about traffic? Oh, like, we didn't think about that. So like, it's just, we're doing things out of order. So there's, you know, there's no holistic, comprehensive plan and things are landing in, in places. So you could tell DPW, and again, this is a contained, I mean, I'll be honest, this is somewhat of a contained project. It's not saying, you know, there's gonna be public comings and goings here. I appreciate that. But it is big trucks and I appreciate that folks were here from Mark Tree, but that's because they were abutters and they got notice. The folks down on Charles River do not know that this is coming and this is happening. They just don't. And they're. And they're gonna hear it. Like, I heard from one neighbor, I said, today, because he had just heard about it. So if they had been given notice that, oh, you know, that the plan now is not to use on Mark Tree, it's going to be to come down Charles River, they might have been here to tell you more.
Thank, thank you, Holly. Any comments? Or have any, any online, Alex?
No hand raised online.
Any further, Natasha?
So I appreciate what Holly's saying, because I live across from her and I live across the daycare that's going to be in use soon, right? I also appreciate that you have 0.2% more, and I think it sounds like it's an operations thing, you know, like, not for emergencies, because you don't know when those come out, but making sure, we do have a huge problem. I mean, we have cars, it's a parking lot in front of my house, especially as soon as school starts again, right? Right now, it's a little less, but I agree with Holly, and maybe, this is because I agree with you that we want to do more planning, but then come didn't give us more planners, right? So this is a way of finding out, like, maybe, is there a better system of understanding what all these projects are? Because we do have F signals in several locations in town, and I know that there were seven of the nine or something were being dealt with from every, but maybe it's something for us to think about as, as the planning board of, we have too many projects on one road, how do we deal with it? I don't think it's their, necessarily their issue. They did their job in the sense of understanding what comes in, but I do think there could be optimal operations that could help seeing what's happening on that road with all of these changes that are happening all at once and have not been taken into account, which I think is what you're saying, Holly. So I, I think that, I'm convinced that you did the best that you could with the information that you had. You can still make better operation choices for the things that you can control, but I think this is an opportunity for Adam to start this review of the plan. No, I mean, let's figure out a way-
It's going to happen again, muzzy 100 class.
Yeah, so how do, how do we look holistically at the town, understanding the areas that are having a lot of projects, because you hear it on Greendale, you hear it on all these, because the town's being affected, and the people that live in the town are being affected. So it's just, so, in general, I think that you did the best that you could at this moment, looking at operations, understanding the things that you can't control, if you can make it easier for those of us that live there and those of us that commute through there. But, but I think it's a bigger issue of planning, of like, all these projects that are happening, is there a way of understanding what they are and understanding what the capacity is for understanding traffic in all of these areas holistically?
Adam?
I think that comment from Holly is, is a valid comment. Like, it's true that, and it's a real challenge, that, you know, projects come up, and, you know, they come up because they tend to be site-specific for specific reasons. And, you know, a developer buys a piece of land, you know, on Greendale, or on Kendrick, or, you know, on the Heights, and that's going to obviously have an impact on traffic patterns in the Heights, or, you know, or there is a unique opportunity that's site-specific to cite the expansion, which was not foreseen before, but based on, you know, municipal demand, you know, as a way to minimize the impact on the infrastructure for the whole of the town, that this site was chosen for, you know, for these reasons. I get that, and yet, it has an impact. Here, I think we're talking about an impact of 32 cars. At least 25% of those, which would be, 10% would be three cars, or about six cars, or trucks, are within the site. And then, and then the others are operating generally at the hours before the peak in the morning and the afternoon. So I appreciate the intention that you've, you know, within the standard of operation. Charis, forgive me, I'm going to put you on the spot. There's a microphone there, too, by the way. It, I can't, I don't know what it is now, but Central and Charles River Street, you know, is, you know, continues to be, I think, at a level of service of F. And I do know that, you know, there are kids that, you know, in the area, and, and, you know, having some kind of a sidewalk would be, or a crosswalk would be, you know, a particular improvement. Does the municipality have any plans for, you know, for that intersection? And if so, what are they?
So I guess a couple of things. So one is the intersection itself, right? And how are the lights functioning with each other? And I'm going to go back and look at where we have that on our capital planning list, where it lies, and if there's any interim solutions we can make. A lot of our old systems either rely on timers or on loop systems, and it could be, to be frank, some of it can be designed, and some of it can be technology and figuring out what the challenges at that location. As far as pedestrian access in that location, one of the challenges we have is we don't have sidewalk on any of the other budding streets. So you can't, you have to connect sidewalk in an accessible manner to another, you know, you could do a landing pad that someone in a wheelchair could get to, and then they're trapped, right? So I think the bigger question is sidewalk in town. My understanding is that part of town was developed without sidewalk, because at the time, the people who wanted to live there didn't want sidewalk.
If you call it.
That has now changed. And so what we're looking at likely in the fall is doing, reach out to a few neighborhoods that are, you know, more of your traditional suburban neighborhoods that have sidewalks on both sides of the road, very low-volume streets, so low volume that they have basketball hoops that face the road. So kids are literally playing basketball in the street. And we're going to talk to them about potentially renovating one of their sidewalks to make it fully compliant, five feet wide, ADA accessible, and new surfacing, with the idea that we would remove the sidewalk on the opposite side of the road. Because what we really have is a challenge of too much sidewalk, and upgrading sidewalk is about, and this is on the low side, a million dollars a mile. So if we have 100 and some odd miles of sidewalk, and we're only funding it at, you know, one to $2 million a year, which is a lot of money to put in sidewalk, we're never going to catch up, let alone add inventory. So the goal really is first to figure out how we can reduce inventory, and obviously that has other benefits, like, we won't have to take down trees in order to expand sidewalk, we won't have to deal with the electric company and poles. But on the other end, we're also looking at trying to add capacity so we can distribute the sidewalk more equitably throughout the town. So it's not a short term. I think you were talking about some of your planning and how long it sort of takes in order to accomplish your goal. It's not a short-term solution, but that's sort of the long-term plan. And that road, in amongst, you know, several other in town, you know, are ones that we're looking at.
So I appreciate, again, you know, going back and taking a look at that intersection and see where it is on the priorities list. And, and also appreciate the intention, planning that you're devoting to, you know, the sidewalk system in town. Thank you very much. I don't have any more commentary, please.
Can I ask one? I think, because there's so many projects happening on Central Ave, including, you know, everything that's happening at the fields, and is there any way, and I know that, is there any way that that, once these projects are completed, that we can do a study, you know, a study to understand the impact of it? Because-
Can I address the elephant in the room?
Please do.
If the town transitioned to curbside pickup, you would reduce the traffic by over 5,000 cars per day, or per week, on Central Avenue. That, as you're looking at that option, which I guess is under study, maybe traffic should be addressed as part of that.
Did you say 5,000 per day?
Per, per week. But the number of visits that go to the RTS generates traffic from all over the town, and that's the biggest generator of traffic in that area.
What percentage of the traffic would be eliminated?
So there's, hold on a second. We have things that haven't occurred yet, like the pickleball hasn't occurred yet, 1688 hasn't happened yet, and that was done during COVID, that assessment, which where there was no traffic. So I'm just, I just, there's a lot going on that I think would be good to look at it holistically. And not because, just because I live there, but because there's just a lot going on on that street, including Sanita Williams and all these others that, you know.
So just to the other two projects that we do have funded on Central that are near, not right up, but we are doing Central at Honeywell right now, which is a legacy system that needs to be upgraded in order to continue to be maintained. And then we are looking at a more cohesive redesign of Central at Great Plains Avenue, to try to get traffic to flow through there in a more logical fashion, because right now, it does create a bottleneck. So those two are on the list, and we have sort of been looking at how all the intersections connect with each other. That's why I need to look at where Charles River at Central is on that list.
You have one minute? One minute, one minute. One minute. Say your name and address, please.
This should be-
Give me the microphone.
I was happy to, and this is, I'm Holly Clark. I appreciate-
Name and address, please.
It remains Holly Clark. At 1652 Central Avenue, I'm a town meeting member for preseason.
Your shirt didn't change.
I appreciate the idea of analyzing it later. You should analyze it now, because once you put the projects in, they're in. And I hear the idea of, well, if we get rid of the RTS, then we'll get rid of traffic. I don't think we're getting rid of the RTS in the next decade. I just don't. I mean, we're trying to, I heard something about doing Pollard over, and I heard that's going to have a $2,700 property tax hit for 20 years. So I think, like, there are just realities, but here, for this project, I would urge the board to memorialize in your decision the conditions that these good people are saying they'll do, because they could go on to other wonderful places, and then we would be left with, you know, the history is gone then. That's why you put it in your decision. And I think limiting, I really think limiting it, and by the way, in David Lazarus's letter, one of his suggestions was maybe on Charles River Street, we get rid of the turn, the right turn on red, because that makes it a little easier. I mean, there are kids trying to cross the street there. You want people to ride bikes in town? They're marooned, so.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comments? I don't see any online.
Lee, you have everything that you used to be able to identify the conditions and then change if they're made.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move if we close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion involved? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unopposed? None. Okay, thank you. And so we will, we will have conditions in there in the order. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is a informal, informal, let's take a, let's take a three-minute break, three or four-minute break, then we'll come back. Then we're going, then we're going to pick it up with the Charles River presentation for the Charles River Proposed 40B. Okay. We all set? Eric's all set? Adam's all set? Lee, you're all set? Alex? Alex, let's, let's bring it back up again. Thank you, Alex. We are going to resume the hearing, the Republican Planning Board hearing on June 20th, June 17th. And the next up is going to be a presentation from the Charles River, for the Charles River Proposal of the 40B project. So, thank you, everyone. And I think what we have here is, we have an Anne, Anne Marie, and we have a Phil Kreen, okay? A Jay Samenski, thank you. A Rebecca Bachan, and I don't have anyone else.
I'm Joe Kathleen.
Oh, 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 you are there, okay. It just is not, looks like not available. Okay, you are available. Okay. So please take it away.
Okay, great. So I am Marie Badra, the president and CEO of the Charles River Center. So I'll kick it off with an overview of the project, if you haven't already heard. Some of you have heard this many times. But just as a reminder for the overview, and then I'll let my colleagues take over some of the details. So we are developing 86 affordable housing units on East Militia Heights, across from the Charles River Center. It's on three and a half acres. The 86 affordable housing units, half of which will be designated to the general community, and half of which will be designated to the Charles River Center clientele. All of the units are affordable housing, but we'll be providing wraparound services to the folks that need it from the Charles River clientele. So wraparound service, our, our services will be funded by the state. We already have experience doing this, and so it's to help our residents live as independently and successfully as possible. So we'll be providing them with the staff, intermittent staff supports that they'll need to live there independently, like job support and socialization and peer support and money management and health and safety oversight and so on and so forth. So, you know, it's a great project with the Planning Office of Urban Affairs, because we have very similar missions. It's a mission-driven development, really. And so we're very excited to do it. So an inclusive, affordable housing complex with both the Charles River Center clientele and community clientele. I'll turn it over to Phil.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Amber. Appreciate it.
I'm not going to go through the, the individual members. We just introduced ourselves here, but, but I'm Phil Kreen, I'm a project manager for the Planning Office of Urban Affairs. We are a nonprofit affiliate of the Archdiocese of Boston, and our mission is to develop housing across the greater Boston area, from Boston to Worcester, up to New Hampshire and down to the Cape. We do rental, mixed-income communities, homeownership opportunities as well, and everything from an eight-unit development to a 15-story high-rise in downtown Boston, we do it all. We're really excited to be partnering with Charles River Center on this one. So just a bit about our project timeline before we get into the, the plan. So we, you know, we made a really great project milestone this year was that we received a $2.8 million commitment from CPA funds from the town. I, you know, that was just an incredible amount of support. Thank you, Mr. Block. I know that you were on the CPA. Good to see you again. And, and then recently met with the, the town staff to introduce them to the project and get some initial thoughts and comments. We met with the Select Board several weeks ago and received a letter of support for the project, and, and we're meeting with you informally here to discuss, to discuss and introduce this project. We know that we'll be back again later this year when, after we receive our project eligibility letter from the state. And next week, we'll be meeting with the Design Review Board to, to introduce the project as well. So in terms of timeline, we'll be working on our project eligibility application to the state. That's going to be the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. That should be to them the next couple of weeks. We'll take, that process takes about four months to conclude.
38 will be for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. There were closed referral process with DDS. We also have a community center that will be available to the community at large. If there's a needing... A meeting space need for a town group, or the town needs to meet somewhere, this will be available. We're envisioning cooking classes, other workshops there, so that will also be available for members of the town to go and attend. Charles River Center has some great programming, so we think this will be a great amenity for the town. There's walking trails around there. It's a beautiful site up there, so we're anticipating doing a lot of connections from the site to take people to nature that's up there and through town. So the other piece you mentioned, let's see, is it here? So just talk about the project design real quick. We have a three... One three-story building. It's Building A that will be in the center of the site, and then three single-story structures that Jay will walk through momentarily. The Building A, the three-story building, will have the common area amenities, like the common room. Imagine it'll be a fitness center and outdoor patio space. But each of the single-story structures will also have their own amenity space with them. It's a big piece of Charles River Center's programming to make sure that folks are... Come out of their units and mingle, and when they want to have that privacy, they're able to go back into their units. These are all studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. They're not SROs, so they'll each have a kitchen and a private bathroom. In terms of just other features, there's 61... We're proposing 61 parking spaces. That's one-to-one for the affordable units. That's typically what we see in our other developments, is each household will have one car, and then a little under half a parking space per CRC unit, and that's just based off of what CRC sees in their building. Not all the folks will drive, and we're also working on providing some type of shuttle service to get folks from the site to their appointments, to the T, do their errands, that sort of a service. And as Emery mentioned, the wraparound services that will be provided there at Charles River Center, their headquarters is just there, so they'll be able to provide great services. And then the last two pieces I want to mention are just that this... All four buildings will be designed to meet passive house standards, which is a rigorous energy building standard. And then we're envisioning that we'll have some onsite renewable energy there. The Charles River Center had some solar panels up there a few years ago, so... And every time I've gone up there, I think this is probably a great site for solar. So we're anticipating having some solar on the roof there. And then I will hand it over to Jay Semensky.
Thanks, Phil. My name is Jay Semensky. I am the principal of the TAT with the architects for the project. So I'll walk you through the site plan and also some images of the exterior of the buildings and some of the details of the floor plans themselves. So this is the proposed site plan. Our sort of initial idea was to keep it as compact as possible so that we can maintain as many of the perimeter trees as possible, and also reduce any retaining walls or grading that we need to do around the perimeter of the site. So what you see on the left side is the site entrance. You'll enter into the site. There are three one-story buildings labeled there as B, C, and D, and associated parking with those buildings. You enter a little bit further into the site in that sort of turnaround space, which is the drop-off for the larger three-story building labeled as Building A. At that point, the drive becomes a one-way circulation, so vehicles drive behind the building in a one-way loop. On the back, you'll see those angled parking spaces are for the residents of Building A, for the most part. And then it loops around the back at the top of the site and heads back out to the front of the site. Next slide. So this is a little bit more detail on the small one-story buildings. So they're all identical in floor plan. They're just arranged differently on the site. Each one of them has six studio units, and each one of those studios has its own small kitchen, its own bathroom. And then in the middle of those sort of six units is a common space that includes a larger kitchen, a living room, a dining area, so that the residents can get together and live as a community, but also have individual space where they can go back to their individual units. Next slide. So this is the ground floor of Building A, the larger building. You can see on the top is the roughly 4,000 square foot community room that Phil mentioned in the kind of pink tone or peach tone. A little bit further down, just adjacent to the drop-off, there's a red arrow. That's the main entrance to the building, where the lobby will be, the mail, the management office space, then a small lounge space that provides access to the courtyard. And then on the two wings, we have residential units. So on the top wing is a cluster of CRC units that's outlined in red. So there are five one-bedroom units in that cluster, and then a shared community room as well. So similar to the one-story buildings, there's a cluster of individual units that have this shared common space. Down on the lower wing, also outlined in red, is another cluster of five studio units with another one of those shared common spaces right on the corner of the building. And then the balance of the units here are typical one- and two-bedroom affordable apartment units. Next slide. So this is carrying up to the second floor. You'll see the... Those two wings have the similar pods that carry up, that stack on the pods below. And again, the balance of these are one- and two-bedroom rental units. Next slide. So this is the third floor, very similar, except that that top pod of CRC units goes away, and that becomes typical one-bedroom units on this floor. Next slide. Now we have some 3D images. So this is kind of an aerial overview, looking into the site. You'll see the smaller one-story buildings in the foreground, and then it works up in scale to the three-story building in the back. Next slide.
Can you carry a statement? Just curious. On those... The next one actually showed... On the one-story buildings, those... The lighting and not the windows and the attic area, is that open to the downstairs? Is it cathedral ceiling? Is that decorative, or what is that?
Yeah. So those small dormers would provide a little bit additional height to the sort of living space of those studio units.
Just that... That's just that spot? Just that window spot? That's just that height right there will add it? So it's not cathedral? It's not adding the whole room?
Um...
Just curious.
Just that dormer will pop up, so there'll be additional height within that...
And also some light coming in from these windows? Okay. Thank you.
So this is a little closer up, sort of pedestrian-level view, looking at the three-story building in the background in two of the one-story pods on each side. On the ground floor of the three-story building, you'll see the community space with a lot of glass sort of front and center, really becomes a focal point as you enter into the site. Next slide. This is a little bit closer view of the three-story building. Again, that ground floor, community space, and then apartments above that. To the far left is an outdoor patio space that's associated with the community room. And sort of in the middle of this slide is the main entrance to the building. Next. This is now going around the rear of Building A, the three-story building. So this is kind of a courtyard space in between those two wings. There'll be a resident entry on the rear side, so for those parking in the back, they'll be able to enter directly into the back of the building. The shared community space associated with those CRC units are on the ground floor. You can see on the far left, again, a lot of glass to provide some connection from the inside to the outside. Next slide. So this is a little closer up view of the one-story building. So in the middle, in the kind of bluish tone, is that common area. So that's the main entrance into the clustered pod. And then the two wings on either side are the studio units with those dormers that you mentioned. Excellent. And this is actually a rendered site plan. I'll let Rebecca speak to this one.
I'm trying to get off covering it all, but I'm Rebecca Bachan, a landscape architect with my own practice. And I love that Jay's renderings, beautiful renderings, actually look like they include native plants. So I'm excited about that, because we'll be definitely leaning heavily into native plantings on the site. And you can see those big green circles are proposed trees. Having gone to the site, it seems like the whole campus is kind of like a tree-lined street. We'd like to maintain that, so you still feel like you're part of the neighborhood. And then preserving as many of the trees around the perimeter as possible. I know it's kind of interesting, it's sitting on such a promontory, but as we noted earlier, and we'll try to limit everything, keep everything up close, that whatever we can keep... I'm not an arborist, unfortunately, but there's some beautiful trees out there. There is one that's really dead. I'll go out. Like, I don't usually say that, but there's one dead. But, you know, to the extent we can, once we really dive deep. And you can see on the bottom-left corner, there's a little bit of a blue line. That's the wetland buffer zone, so I think we're planning to only work in the buffer area. And the majority of that work, I think, we'll actually be removing and replacing. There's a driveway there from the old development, so we'll be removing that and replacing it with, you know, native ground covers, most likely, that can take over and revegetate that space. Any additional plantings will be native drought-tolerant. There's actually some... A lot of bittersweet around the edges right now, so we'll be removing the bittersweet and making sure we revegetate with native plantings. And then called out the kind of courtyards and patio spaces and things. And one thing I'm really excited to work with CRC on is the integration of sensory gardens, healing gardens, and that type of program, animated horticultural therapy, things like that. And I didn't show it on this, because it's kind of the nitty-gritty as we get into it, but beyond the kind of zoning compliant things like parking lot plantings and screening, we'll be definitely taking a look at that. And then, to the extent we can with the... There's some challenging grading out there once we get back into the roadway, but connecting the walking paths and sidewalks on this site to the rest of the campus, I think, is really integral to the plans, so... Looking forward to diving deeper.
One quick question. You talk about the bottom left. I see an arc or a circle that says... Is that the blue? Is that the wetlands?
That's the buffer zone, so then there's an inner one.
The narrow... The smaller one is the wetlands, then the buffer. Is that a 50-foot, 100-foot?
That's a...
Okay.
We like leaning into Joe a lot, too, on the side, to make sure we get all the grading as close to the best as we can.
Yeah. Sure. That wetland is an old range swell that has become a resource area and, you know, delineated. So we're just being mindful of that, not putting structure in that area, but we'll have to work in that area. But as Rebecca mentioned, there's some pavement there now, so we'll be going in front of the commission in the future to mitigate that, but we're trying to minimize our impact to that area.
Well, being on the tree committee, I advocate for trees. So as many trees as you can plant and as large a diameter as you can muster.
Actually, I'm sorry. That inner arc you see, that might be a no-disturb zone, which is...
Oh, that's a...
The actual wetland is very even.
Very nice. So 25-foot near this. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And that just really concludes what we were here to present. Happy to discuss any aspect of the site plan or general plans or...
Eric? Natasha?
I think it's a great project. I saw your presentation. So, I mean, I think this is part of the whole thing about the whole traffic of Central Avenue continuing, but I think it's a great project.
Adam?
I've heard this project presentation...
A million times.
So many times. Exactly.
Pretend you have a question you've never asked before.
What... So some things that I did learn that I may have missed in previous rounds was the robust level of community benefit. So I understood from your earliest presentation that the concept, the underlying concept of the program, was to house people of the broader community with... Together with people, you know, with these disabilities. And it's so clear in the presentation that you're trying... You're creating these community benefits, like the walking path will be significant for some, the community room that'll be available to the public use for different, you know, nonprofits around town. I think that's a huge opportunity, and what you're trying to do is continue that concept of bringing the community in while, you know, while this unique community is also integrated in other aspects of a larger world. And I see that as, you know, as with so much intention, the way that you're building or will build these sensory gardens and so on, which serve a certain purpose for some, and yet are also serving such a wider purpose for greater benefit. So there are a number of community benefits to the project that, you know, that I think will be clear for part of your comprehensive, you know, application. I'm a... I don't know that we're allowed to say, but I'm going to say, I'm a huge fan of the project. I work in affordable housing now, and I know how, you know, how challenging it is. And to see such a well-thought-through project that can serve the, you know, community that's not often served, that has the benefit of the wraparound services, that's so deeply interconnected with the wider community, is just such a pleasure to see, and I'm really, you know, hopeful and looking forward to the project and can't wait until you break around.
Thank you, Adam. Yeah, it is a great project. Known the property for a very long time, and it's great to see something going on with it. And this will serve a great benefit. Do have a couple of questions. You were talking about the, you know, the amount of parking spaces per unit and the version of the shuttle that's going on. What do you envision the shuttle? How often? We do have public transit in Needham. This isn't near... Well, it's not that far away from public transit. Actually, so...
So that's exactly what we were considering. At first, we were thinking that they could walk to public transportation, but it's over a mile and a half. And that's really... We measured it, so...
Yeah.
That's really too far. So we decided that we'll do a shuttle service for folks. How often will it leave the facility? It's hard to tell. It could be just taking people to their jobs, they can doctor's appointments. I can tell you that North Hill was very excited about our shuttle service and really wanted to work with us to partner with this shuttle service. So again, another point of integration or inclusion with folks without disabilities and people with disabilities.
Yep. Because I believe North Hill does have a shuttle.
They do have a shuttle. Yes.
Actually says North Hill.
Right. So it probably, you know, doesn't meet everybody's needs, so he was very... Joe was very excited to partner with us. And I still have to connect with him again to get the details on it. But again, another point of integration. And Adam, your comments were really thoughtful, and I will say that, you know, Needham's been very important to the Charles River Center, but also core to our mission is that inclusion piece. So it's not enough to have us up on a hill and be well-served, but people have to know us. We have to know people. We have to feel comfortable with each other all the time, so that's really core to the mission, so...
Thank you. The other question is related to water and flooding and mitigation of the water.
while, you know, while this unique community is also integrated in other aspects of a larger world. And I, and I see that as, you know, as, with so much intention, the way that you're building or will build these sensory gardens and so on, which serve a certain purpose for some, and yet are also serving such a wider purpose for greater benefit. So there are a number of community benefits to the project that, you know, that I think will be clear for part of your comprehensive, you know, application. I'm a, I don't know that we're allowed to say, but I'm gonna say, I'm a huge fan of the project. I work in affordable housing now, and I know how, you know, how challenging it is. And to see such a well-thought-through project that can serve the, you know, community that's not often served, that has the benefit of the wraparound services, that's so deeply interconnected with the wider community, is just such a pleasure to see. And I'm really, you know, hopeful and looking forward to the project and can't wait until the break round.
Thank you, Adam. Yeah, it is a great project. Known, known the property for a very long time, and it's great to see something going on with it. And this, this will serve a great benefit. Do, do have a couple of questions. You were talking about the, you know, the amount of parking spaces per unit and the version of the shuttle of going on. What, what do you envision the shuttle, how often? We do have public, we do have public transit in Needham. This isn't near, well, it's not that far away from public transit.
So that's exactly what we were considering. At first, we were thinking that they could walk to public transportation, but it's, it's over a mile and a half. And that's really, we measured it, so.
Yeah, interesting.
That's really too far. So we, we decided that we'll do a shuttle service for folks. How often will it leave the facility? It's hard to tell. It could be just taking people to their jobs, it can, doctor's appointments. I can tell you that North Hill was very excited about our shuttle service and really wanted to work with us to, to partner with their shuttle service. So again, another point of integration or inclusion with folks without disabilities and people with disabilities.
Yep, because I believe North Hill does have a shuttle.
They do have a shuttle, yes.
Actually says North Hill.
Right. So probably, you know, doesn't meet everybody's needs, so he was very, Joe was very excited to partner with us. And I still have to connect with him again to get the details on it. But again, another point of integration. And Adam, your comments were really thoughtful, and I will say that, you know, Needham's been very important to the Charles River Center, but also core to our mission is that inclusion piece. So it's not enough to have us up on a hill and be well-served, but people have to know us, we have to know people, we have to feel comfortable with each other all the time. So that's really core to the mission, so.
Thank you. The other question is related to water and flooding and mitigation of the, of the water and the groundwater, back into the groundwater. And because it's a large structure now, a large hole in the ground, I guess there won't be basins, but there's still, if there aren't, there's still a hole in the ground going on. What's happening with making sure there's no flooding? Isn't that a big, big, big change in the landscape?
The site itself, there's not a stormwater service up there, so it, actually, when you look at the topography, this specific site, it, it sheds off in all directions. Nothing sheds through the site. We're really, seemed like the top of the hill there when I studied the topography. So we're gonna have our challenges, you know, currently, the, the site sheds water in a few different directions to wooded area, all wooded areas and some to Dwight. So what we'll be doing preliminary, preliminarily, is planning to at least retain and hopefully infiltrate one inches of rainfall. So we, we do have to do some subsurface explorations to make sure that we could, we can achieve that. But I think that will mitigate, you know, to be honest, this, this will be a slight increase in impervious area compared to what is up there now. We're, we're very aware of that.
We are quite a big.
We are gonna mitigate with some, I don't, I don't think this site will be well-served by some open basins, but some things subsurface, probably relatively shallow, but our target will be to, to infiltrate one inch of, of rainwater, which is gonna cover a lot of storms that will have zero runoff for through, you know, year to year. We, we don't have a full stormwater design, but without a, a way to overflow to, you know, an MS4 system in Needham, we're gonna have to manage that onsite.
Yeah, you're right, there's a lot of, it seems like a lot of impervious surface has been added. And as far as the town goes, I mean, there is talk about raising that one-inch requirement to, at some point, they were pushing two, now maybe it'll be winding up at one and a half.
Yeah, we, we've heard that comment.
Yeah, so I think you should probably, I mean, even if it doesn't, I think you should try to plan for greater than one.
We'll see, well, we'll see how our soils are performing, and we will be happy to oblige that. And so I don't wanna commit to that, but I, I'm, we've heard that comment, and we'll be open to that, but we'll be at least one inch.
Okay, thank you. The other question's just related to traffic, the traffic flow and the lights requirements, which way is it, which way is it going, which way is the traffic going? And what's going to happen with mitigation onto Central Avenue?
Yep, so we're going to do a traffic study, and we have considered, you know, changing the flow of the traffic, maybe not down Dwight, but possibly East Malicia. So yes, it goes down to Forest and then it's light, but because there is such a bottleneck, and it was referenced in the earlier discussions on Central Avenue, Dwight, that's problematic, so.
Would, there might be a one loop type of thing, more like up, up from Central, down Forest, up from Forest, down to Central?
Kind of what we were thinking is, well, no, so up from Dwight, possibly down East Malicia, so.
We're down to Forest.
Like a one-way, down to East Malicia. I mean, I'm making it up, that's what we're talking about. The study hasn't been done, so.
Yeah, this, this, you know, our, our firm is doing the traffic study, and I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't speak to it, but I know we've studied additional intersections along Central, including Forest, and the study is almost complete. We made sure to get our data before the school year ended, so it's in progress now, so that it's ready when we are ready for more technical things come the fall. So, you know, I think it's a great question, but we've already heard, obviously, the situation and are taking that into consideration, yeah.
I think this also, the other challenge with, with going down East Malicia, because it's owned by Napson, do you have an ease nip?
But, well, we, we have to, we've had a couple conversations with them, and we're true, where that's not something we've brought up yet, but that is on the top of our list next time we have our conversation with Napson.
Thank you. I mean, it is a wonderful addition to the town. Just a little mitigation, just plugging the traffic, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll be great. Really is a great addition to the town.
Thank you.
And a beautiful design.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Yes. And now Beth Israel. And we have Evan Schuber and Nate Turner. Beth Israel, talking about their, what they're looking to do in their additional parking, parking lot on the other side of Chestnut Street, on Oak Street, I believe. So I think there's one other person here that I don't have on the list. So I, I have you, Evan, I have Evan, you, and I have Nate Turner, and...
Nate's not here.
Oh, oh, so, so, so please, you know, when you speak, just please speak here. State your name, grab a, grab a microphone, please. Thanks, thanks, Evan.
So, thank you for carving out some time for us. I know that you accommodated us on a busy, otherwise busy schedule. So Mr. Turner, our architect, is not here, he got delayed in his travel plans, so I'm not sure if he's even able to participate remotely. Randy Howard, the COO from the hospital, is hooked in remotely, I hope he is. And then with me is Brian Baz from the General Counsel's Office and Peter Dane, our, our parking consultant.
Thank you, Evan.
And I'm on, what you know, I am, it's Randy.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Of course. So Nate, being our technical guy, we don't, we don't have the capability right now to put anything up on the screen, so we brought, in our old-school fashions, paper copies of the most recently revised parking layout. We heard loud and clear Ms. Espada and others who were concerned about trying to put in a vegetated border on the Oak Street side of the proposed lot. So we've come up with a revised plan, we have paper copies of it, if you don't have it on your screen in front of you, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I have it all.
Okay, so there it is. Thank you, Natasha. So you can see on the left-hand side on Oak Street, we've got, we've reconfigured the parking spaces, and we've got a five-foot vegetative, space for a five-foot vegetated border on the Oak Street side. We're still able to maintain the 52 spaces that we were targeting by rearranging the layout, some of the layout, and by shortening the space, some of the spaces by a foot. But we've still maintained a good drive aisle of no less than 19 feet wide. So Mr. Dane is here, he's our parking guy, if you want to ask him any questions about how the slot will function, but that's our basic revised proposal, which we were trying to address your, what we understood to be your primary concern.
That's it for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Evan, I appreciate it. And, and thank you for paying, listening to what we were talking about as far as putting some type of vegetation in, because, you know, we're losing a couple of houses, it's tough to lose, it's tough to lose the property, but at the same time, the hospital's a, a good neighbor, good neighbor of ours. There was some concern about, you know, the traffic flowing across Chestnut, having to flow down Freeman Lanes, little tra, little concerns about that, but we have traffic, we have to deal with it somehow. And there's, and we don't, sometimes we don't have many options. And so thank you for doing this. I don't have any, I actually, I don't have any questions at this point, but thank you for listening to us, I appreciate it. Eric?
It's a five-foot landscaping buffer, is that similar to what's along Chestnut Street by the hospital? I think we were asking for a comparison, I was just curious.
Brian or Randy, do you know the answer to that question?
Well, can you repeat the question? I had a hard time hearing.
Sorry, oh, yeah, this. So the landscape buffer that was added in response to some of our comments, just, I wanted to get an idea of a comparison to the landscaping buffer by the hospital parking lot along Chestnut Street. We had made a comment about that during the last meeting.
And, and my apologies, in that you wanted more of a buffer on the hospital existing parking lot as well?
I think he's just asking whether or not this is comparable to the buffer.
Oh, yes, yes. And, and we're, you know, we're obviously happy to, if you have something in mind, based on the fact that it is across the street, and, like, our bavities are a great solution, they, they grow fast and really block the view, so it doesn't, you know, look like a parking lot so much. But we're happy to entertain ideas as well. We do want to keep it consistent with the rest of the vegetation in the area.
I think that, that's what my, my point was, but, you know, we appreciate the, the addition of the landscaping buffer, does make a difference, and adding some of that, you know, the trees, the arbivores would be very helpful, but this is, this, before the comment from me.
Natasha?
No, I appreciate that, that you were able to figure out how to get the same amount of cars with that five-foot piece. I guess I would, I would, and I'm looking at the Google Earth, because this only shows me the site, but it doesn't show me the context, but I'm looking at what's on Chestnut Street. I think just having more information on what type of plantings you're putting there and making sure that there, I, I was looking at around the hospital, there's some areas that have plantings that are to the hood of a car, and then there are trees, and then other areas on Lincoln Street that, that have full coverage. So understanding what you're planning for it would be really helpful. Obviously, you know, more coverage is better because you're eliminating trees and eliminating some other things, and you're going from a residential neighborhood, kind of in the transition area. So appreciate the five-foot, just get, if we could get more information on the types of plantings that, that would be there year-round, right, not just seasonal.
Right, they'll, they'll be evergreens for sure, and we'll, and we'll get you some better specs on it.
A question? A hedge, evergreen hedge behind, and daylilies or similar up front to add some color, does that make sense?
Yeah, I could just, yeah, sign a proposal of what you think would be, would be good, and...
Well, I, I, I think our next step, depending on how this goes, is that we'll be actually applying for, I think we have to technically go through site plan review, because we're creating more than 25 parking spaces, so we'll be doing that formal process. The purpose of these preliminary meetings with you was to get a sense of whether or not this was generally acceptable to the board. And so when we actually submit the application for a site plan review, special permit, we'll have that information, and we actually, you know, we, I appreciate you making that comment. We, one of the things we wanted to accomplish tonight was to see what additional information you want from us.
So I think that you've heard consensus, I think you've heard probably from Justin on the last session as well. You know, it's an improvement, I was, like Natasha had raised that, you know, and, and I think this will be a substantial, you know, improvement. And the fact you're able to maintain the cars, I think the way that you designed it will be immensely beneficial to get more cars off the road, to get them kind of off the other site. It'll be safer pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And I, you know, I only wish that there was a way to get a second story on, you know, there, but, but I know that there's not. My only comment about the vegetation is I think that we, you know, to be mindful of, and I believe, and we, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a condition in a previous special permit that dealt with landscaping at, on campus of the actual hospital. And there, and I think it's been brought up before, that that strip along Chestnut Street sometimes doesn't look as pretty as it may otherwise used to have. And while you're in the process of, you know, improving this, it might make sense to, you know, remove some of the dead plantings, don't plant anything that's, you know, that's gonna be in the same kind of condition three years from now or eight years from now. But I think even just removing, you know, the dead, I think, would, would make that a little better. And I, and, you know, I'm not a landscape architect, so I'm sure you're gonna engage one, you'll have that as part of your plan to us, I was gonna drive to the next step. You already, you know, you already have done that, Evan, so that's, that's great. Just be mindful of whatever you, you know, you plant, that it's, you know, it's not stuff that we're gonna have to call you back on. I don't wanna have to do that, you know, for the hospital, it's such a critical community resource, you do credible, important work for the town, and I don't wanna see administrative time and effort and cost go into like policing, you know, landscaping. So, so, you know, color's great, texture, height change, it's a huge visual, visual attraction that I think Natasha was trying to get at. It's screening for the parking lot off Oak, which is what she was trying to create with that edge. So grateful, you know, for the hospital's willingness to consider it and to commit to it, and I look forward to, you know, to next steps, which I hope will be pretty soon.
Thank you.
So landscaping, what we're proposing in the current campus, is there any other information that you think you'll wanna hear from us?
I don't need information about the main, about the main building.
Okay.
You're, I'm just curious, obviously, the, the parking to the north, let's say, is head, head, is head up, and the hedges will hopefully block, block the, block the headlights from the north, and the other ones will be swinging and heading to the south?
The ones on Freeman?
Freeman, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, they had, they face in the opposite direction.
Even both lanes, because, you know, you pull in like tandem parking almost, and you just scoot right out, just flow right out from there.
That's the idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm also... Other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for your feedback.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
And before, before, there's, there's one thing I need to bring up, you're not gonna love it, but I need to bring it up.
Not for you.
Not for you, not for you, not for you guys, you're good. Lee?
You're off the hook.
Yeah, Lee, when, when we talked earlier, I don't know, earlier today, yesterday, or something to that, we were talking about the 88 Great Plan Ave, and talking about the existing zoning district, and I was concerned, you know, is it spot zoning, what are we doing? And I made some comment, comment about that. You, you did, made some indication that we could just extend that district over, and it wouldn't be considered spot zoning.
No, you could, you could enlarge the center business.
We just could extend it, and it wouldn't be considered spot zoning.
No.
Okay. So my, my concern is, my, my, I mean, I appreciate you wanting to do, you guys can do off, off the books, anything you wanna do. My concern is that if we're looking right now, all the way from Linden to Warren Street, we're talking, we're talking hitting, hitting a residential neighborhood, and we're talking a lot of time, a lot of hearings, and I don't know when that would get to, get to town meeting for a vote.
I think, I appreciate, and I've been thinking about this the whole meeting, I appreciate that you're trying to, that you're trying to review the process, because I think we need to review our process in order to be able to accomplish more. So I think, thinking about it and bringing it up, you know, and, and sharing how you think we can improve, and maybe we can find ways of funding these things and funding someone to help us, and maybe we can get someone to come in halftime to help with it, too, would be, I think, advantageous for the planning board to be able to plan.
Sure.
So the status quo is not allowing us to do more than we have. We went, we fought at the meeting, and I coached Lee on, like, you have to make the case of why you need additional help. There was not an opportunity for funding for most things this year.
Well, there was no, there was no added staff made, and actually, the town manager, when she reported, said that this was her number-one priority. If the money had been there in terms of staffing, she would've, she would've, she would've funded the position. So it was really a fiscal issue.
Right, so creating opportunities to create priorities that may be funded in other ways that could move this forward would be amazing. The thing is, they're, they're big undertakings, and I think we can do it.
Sounds like you're, sounds like you're brilliant, going, going rough in effort here. I'll chip in.
Yeah, you're doing it. I'm just, no, I have to, I mean, I think Stephen Palmer, because of my connection to PBBC and planning board, seems like a better place for me to put my efforts in right now.
I'm only kidding, and I'm not asking you to, you know, to, you know, to do something, to extend your...
No, but I think if, if you can find a different process that can help us move things forward fast, I think that's great.
So all we're, all we're, all we're gonna do is...
It sounded like you were plan, you were gonna be planning it and proposing it to the planning board. That's what it sounded like originally, that's why I'm like, I'm not sure the community's gonna want that, but if you put it in the process...
I apologize, I am not Trump, I'm not looking to do anything by executive decree. All, I, all I'm trying to do is be responsive to the hundreds of voices that the town has heard from in improvements to the business condition in the center of town, and to draw and to unlock the economic engine of what that other parcel, unlocking the Charles, is really designed to do. And no one is stepping up to lead the effort. So, so Eric has volunteered, Justin has volunteered, and I volunteered to kickstart the process. I'm not, we're not circumventing anything, I'm not looking to circumvent anything. I will have a conversation, if you're okay, already, with FinCom and with the town manager's office to identify some additional resources if it's available, and if it's not, and it may not be, and I wouldn't be surprised, that's okay.
Well, Adam, I...
I'm not done yet.
No, I appreciate it, but you, people have been talking a long time, and I started the talk, and letting Natasha talk, and been going on for a while.
So you're not gonna let me continue?
No, 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 you can continue. So I think unlocking, no, unlocking the, no, thank you, unlocking the Charles, going that area down there, definitely, you can spend a lot of time, it's very important, that's a, that's a whole thing, needs to be looked at down there. Related to Great Plan Ave, though, you're talking about from Linden to Warren Street, you're talking about getting into residential areas, which you want to bring a plan to, to rezone, that's gonna take a long time, because there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of discussion that has to go on as far as what's going on down to Warren, and maybe up, up to Denham Ave, and then back to Denham. As, and for the, for the, for the main purpose of getting a... As a, and for the, for the, for the main purpose of getting 888 project going. That's the main purpose, because, because we need to do something for the town, the center of town. We need to find some way to get something going, but there's multiple, there's multiple owners, it's hard to do. I'm not saying impossible, if we can, if we can increase some possibility, some height or something, maybe they'd be more willing to do it. But if you want to get 888 Great Plan Ave going, maybe there's a way for us to flow existing district over to that parcel and find some way to make that happen. That has some possibilities of a next, next year or so, next year.
Oh, I, again, I'm sorry, I don't know why you, and I'm sorry that you feel like, you know, this process, you know, to kickstart this process, you know, in some way threatens, you know, a, a, a public engagement process.
I'm not, no, 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 I'm not saying it threatens it, I'm saying to go through that process, going to Warren Street, is going to take, that's going to take a long time with everything that's going on, that's going to take a long time. Once, once we get to the point of actually talking about it in the board and having hearings, for the, for the main purpose of trying to find a way to allow 888 Great Plan Ave to occur, is that's the main thing going on. Because this, because you brought up this comparison between Muzzy Ford, and, and if we don't do it now, we're missing the opportunity. We're not, we're not missing the opportunity, we're not, we're not missing the opportunity. We've just done a lot of zoning, rezoning with the MBTA Community Act.
We've heard hundreds, if I may.
Please do.
We, we've heard hundreds of business, hundreds of comments from residents and businesses about, uh, about areas of improvement for the center of town. We have that.
We have more, we have more.
We, we, we know that there is a desire among residents and a desire among business owners in the town to increase the economic activity. We also know that mixed-use development would support that. One of the techniques, like you suggested, is to explore the existing zoning and look at what there, what deficiencies exist. There is a CEA that looked at this, I've gone door-to-door as part of the CEA. The planning board wasn't doing it, to meet with businesses, to understand that. I could do it again, Eric's volunteered to do that again, or to do it as well. And in addition to that, um, we'll look at extending, you know, a neighboring district and making modifications. But if, you know, if you're saying that to go, to make the change from this part to that part is going to take long, if you expand it down Chestnut, up, uh, up Chap, um, Chaplain and Highland Avenue, it's going to take even longer. There was a reason why, you know, there were so many challenges, and I heard all of those. Ken brought many of them up, sorry to single you out, but you're, you're present, so, so, a- a- and those comments, those comments were valid about improvements to, uh, you know, to the center of town. And Ally Blower also made some really interesting, insightful comments. We can, all I'm saying is like, let's get into it, let's study it, let's come back to the, back to the board, we'll devise a plan, we'll make a proposal. If, if the planning board votes against the proposal, that's its prerogative, if it votes to advance.
What proposal of what? Of the design or proposal of the process?
Framework of the process, framework of process.
Yeah, I think that's great, you're a process.
But you're talking about actually creating a plan.
Yeah, I think we could come up with...
See, that's the plan, you're not talking, I mean, part of this process, you know, that's process and this plan. I understand, I understand why we want things to be bigger, better, I get that, okay, I get that, okay? But there isn't, this isn't going to all of a sudden make a change, looking at Linden to Warren Street. That's not going to be the thing that makes the change. It's going, there are a lot of parcels, there's a lot we have to look at to make that work. It isn't going, it is a lot we have to do to make that work. It isn't, it isn't, let, let's, let's talk for a year, I wish, I wish it was. I wish we could talk from now to next year, and we can solve it. I wish to God we could, we're not going to solve the center of town in one year, it's not going to happen. But we can maybe solve 888 Great Plan Ave.
We, there are...
But that's, but that's one specific law, we can't do one, I, I think, I think...
If we can shift over.
But the issue is more than just 888 Great Plan Ave.
I understand.
And ignoring the spot zoning issue, given, we're, yeah, Adam and I have not spoken about this. I just volunteered because, and you know, I actually spoke to, to Lee when I sat down for my orientation. She asked me what are, some of my sort of passions. And, you know, given my retail background, my commercial real estate background, you know, I've really been listening to people, especially with the Envision Project, talking about some of the struggles that our business owners have in the center of town, in, in other places in town. We shouldn't ignore that, but specifically in the center of town, whether it's losing parking spaces, whether it's having bike lanes, and this lack of planning, you know, central planning for our downtown area. And, um, the time is now, um, the, the, you know, with the economy where it is, with tariffs, with inflation, businesses are struggling, and we need to really think from a planning perspective, and it's not just about 888, um, Great Plan Ave, it, it, it is that corridor. And, you know, last time that there was a zoning change that, you know, affected that central business district, 15 years, there was only one building that was, was put up by that. And, you know, you know, we, we can do better to, uh, and create, uh, create economic opportunity for existing businesses, bring in new businesses. And I think for me, it's not necessarily coming up with this entire plan and presenting it, it's just starting the process. It, it's, it's sort of, you know, getting some people in the room, figuring out, you know, what are some things, what are some goals, initiatives that we want to do? What are things that we've heard from the community that are the problems? Put those pens to paper and come up, how do we start this, rather than...
Compile all the information.
Compile the information. I don't want to sit in this room a year from now, and we're looking at our list for planning, and it's the same...
And we haven't touched it.
And we haven't touched it.
Then, then start, then start the process with the center of town. The, 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 the center of town, and then, then we'll focus on one, that one of the parcels to find some way to make that happen.
I think that doing that involves multiple intersections, multiple streets, and that, I think, is, it will for sure take a lot longer, so...
Not necessarily, not necessarily a lot longer.
So, do you want to do something different then, do you want to take it on?
I don't want to take it on, I'm not going to take it on.
Well, Chestnut, Chestnut Street has been part of MBTA Communities Act, so, you know, that area is...
Chestnut Street is not part of MBTA.
Yes, it was.
I'll, I'll lay down Chestnut, oh, I'll lay down.
The Chestnut Street was the whole...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking Chapel, I'm thinking Chapel, I'm thinking Chapel.
There was, and there was a reason why, and there was a reason why Hone chose not to deal with it, because, you know, you know...
No, we dealt with it, but it was the neighborhood plan.
No, I mean...
Right, the center needs to be looked at as the center.
Yeah, me, excuse me.
So, I, what, so, there is context to all of this. Eric and I, but again, if you don't want us to do this, we won't.
I want you, I want you to do the center down Highland, Highland to May, down Chapel to May. That's what, that's what needs to happen.
I understand that's what you want to do, and then maybe, I guess, we'll have a conversation when Justin gets back to see if there's, you know, what there's support for. But I think that, um, you know, I think the bigger the thing becomes, the greater the likelihood of A, significant delay, and B, lack of action, and, you know, and, you know, if anything comes together. So, I think there is a simpler way to, to kickstart the process. I think that Eric and I can look at that zoning, there is deficiency in that zoning, that's why there's only, only one project. The market can just, sorry.
Well, no, you'd have to, you'd have to modify it, it, it would be the framework, and then you would modify it.
Here's what I would propose, that we take a look, Great Pla- Great Plan Ave corridor, Chapel, Chestnut. I, I don't want to put anything off the table, but I, I do want to recognize the fact, and we went through this with MBTA Communities Act, one thing that we heard from the community was that it's just doing too much at one time. And I, I think we can make a lot of impact, um, with some concentrated zoning changes. Um, but let's look at it, let's look at what that concentrating zoning change looks like. Uh, but I do want to be mindful of, of what we went through with the MBTA Communities Act, and some of the response to that when we tried to do too much.
That's, we want to look at stuff, we didn't look at with MBTA. Natasha?
Can I ask something, so, you need to sign each of the plan sheets.
Sure.
From, from my own work, you know, so I do, I do master planning, right? Um, and from the work that was, that we did for P, from PPBC and even the planning board, we can't just look at one street of a larger complex, you really need to master plan the whole thing. What I'm hearing from you is that there might be low-hanging fruit that we can address first before there's a larger master plan. I think that's what I'm hearing from, from Adam right now.
And I, and I'm not throwing any side street off the table.
No, 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 I understand, I'm just, I'm just kind of trying to take what you're saying and trying to articulate, like, the process of, ideally, you would have a master plan of the town center, the pieces that we didn't do for MBTA Communities, right? And you could put whatever boundaries, we would have a consultant that would look at it and put boundaries around the area that really makes sense for zoning. What you're saying is, let's get all the information that we currently have, all the surveys that have been done, all the pieces, let's see if there's low-hanging fruit, and what, you know what this is reminding me is of the, um, sustainable, what's the, uh, AD's husband, Frail, Steven Frail, but he was chair of the, that we were, the Climate Action Plan Committee. So, this could be kind of the downtown action plan committee that could say, we need to look at trees, we need to look at this, we need to look at that, and then determine if there's some low-hanging fruit that could be easily dealt with, and then what are the, what is the plan and the framework for doing the larger work?
Well, I...
And he has different people from different, from different groups in town, looking at the different components of it.
Right.
And it was very effective, because a lot of these things, depending upon where it was, it linked with other groups that were already doing some of that work.
I don't know how, how integrated will, you know, all the ultimate committee would be with like, you know, I don't want to have mission creep, I see, I see an opportunity. You know, we, we know that 888 is, to Artie's point, is, you know, is active, you know, to move, but, you know, there is a bigger opportunity, a bigger interest for the town outside of that one parcel. And, you know, the broader the thing becomes, the, you know, the less work is actually going to get accomplished, just hear me out. Let Eric and I get together and, you know, and come up with some kind of a plan. We'll look at the existing zoning, we'll look at maybe extending that, and, you know, um, and we'll come, and we'll give some thought to, you know, the size of a committee, how the committee would roll out, we'll put something in a schedule, and Eric and I will also look at the zoning itself, we'll be mindful of, you know, of what kind of programs are possible. And as a, as a, you know, and, and we'll present that, we'll move that forward, we'll talk about it as a group on the planning board, we'll talk about it as part of a committee. But like Eric said, if, you know, it's really easy for, you know, for us to be here a year from now, and no, and insignificant action and progress has been taken. And if it becomes too big, if we're, if we, you know, then it really is not going to happen. And I don't want to be part of something, you know, that's just, you know, that's not going to really, um...
More fair fruit, fair fruit.
Yeah, like, I think it was, you know, I, I recognize the role of public engagement, I'm not looking to sideswipe it, I'm not looking to not have a process, I'm not looking to do this in secret.
No, we understand.
Well, it sounded like before that there was...
Before we did it, because you said, I'm going to plan this, and I'm going to bring it to you and see if you agree. That's what I, that's what it sounded like, and it's not what you meant to say.
So, I think we're clear?
So, so, just, just, just pulling, pulling, just Chapel Street and Highland Ave down to May.
I'm going to go that far, let them do their work, right?
Well, well, no, no, they're, they're, they're going for low-hanging fruit, so, look at those, look at those areas as well. There's the low, there's, there's the center of town, look at the low-hanging fruit.
That zoning is part of, you know, the central business district, we'll look at, at the zoning of the district, and we may make a recommendation to the planning board on how we move forward that may or may not include rezoning Chestnut, Chapel, and Highland at this time, or some, or any combination.
Or a combination.
Or a combination, there are.
I think that sounds, I think that sounds great, and I think it, it'll be interesting to see if there are other ways of doing the process that can make us move faster, and that can allow Lee, who has very limited resources, have a, have a department that could, that could work on these projects in different ways. Maybe it's a way of finding funding for additional help to be able to do it. Maybe this is what we needed to be able to, to find additional funding.
Yeah, see what, see what, per se, defects or things that, that could be, quick, quick changes, that could easily make a difference.
If there's a specific protocol, program, then maybe it's eligible, maybe there's planning, maybe there's planning funds to actually assist you implement it.
Right.
Yeah.
Once, once you lay it out.
And again, I don't want you guys, a year from now, not a lot of ha- has happened else, and that's actually why I want to contain some aspect of it, not going down to Warren right now, is that, that, I, that...
Yeah, but you're talking specifics, there, there's still big picture.
Uh, but, but still the big picture.
So, when they give you...
Artie, Artie, here's what, here's what's going to, here's what I recommend that we do, okay? And I don't want to continue the conversation, and I don't want, and I just, we're going around and around the Marigold Bush. So, let me just lay it out, if you disapprove of it, it's your choice as chair, that's fine, I'll stop. If otherwise, there's movement to move forward, what I propose is, you know, uh, Eric and I, on the one hand, on downtown in particular, Justin and I will do the same with respect unlocking the Charles. We'll map out some kind of a framework. We'll make a recommendation at some point to the planning board, probably fairly soon, whether or not we, you know, the program that we envision, the planning process that we envision, whether it makes sense to include a broader area or a more contained area. And if the planning board votes against a contained area, then we'll look at a broader area, and we'll take a long time to do it. Or if the planning board, you know, votes yes to a contained area, then we'll work on the contained area.
And what I'm saying is, in your conversations, take into account the timeline of when you're trying to accomplish something, and how far it goes in one direction towards the neighborhood, and how long that will add. You're talking about add, add to, how long that will add to the timeline. So, I would suggest you, you, you look at, you look at the where the containment stops. I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, perhaps you don't want to go there, perhaps keep it just the center of town.
We'll make a proposal.
Do that.
And I think, Artie, that's exactly what he said.
Well, no, it wasn't, it is now, but it wasn't then.
But now it is, now we're all on the same page.
You veto authority.
Now, now it is.
Veto authority.
Now, now, no, I'm, no, I think it's a good idea, but just keep it, keep it, look at all and then come back for something.
Right.
That, that will work in the timeline that you're hoping for.
We'll make a proposal.
In the meantime, Lee, I know he's brought nothing before us, it is it, but maybe he wants to, then maybe we can look at extending, extending that district, if he wants something to happen there in, in, you know, without going out a year and a half. Because if he doesn't, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, guys, before you leave, I have a subdivision plan I need for you to sign.
I move, we adjourn?
Second.
So, moved, all in, in discussion, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.